And it is preparing to livestream now. You should be good to go.
Great. Welcome everyone to the April 19th City Council meeting. I'd like to open this meeting and call to order and start. Great. Welcome everyone. And start with the pledge of allegiance. Can I ask Councilmember Armand Darris to lead us in the pledge? Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with justice.
Thank you. Okay, do we have someone here for an invocation?
No, we do not.
All right. City Clerks report on posting the agenda.
The agenda was posted on Wednesday, April 14th at 12:45 PM.
All right, and roll call, please.
Rebecca Armandaris here, Dion Bracco, Zach Hilton,
Here.
Peter LaRoumanios,
Present.
Carol Marks here, Fred Tovar.
Here.
Marie Blankley here. Okay, under orders of the day, I read the following. All council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number N 2920 in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on cable channel 17 and on Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching online on Zoom at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash RB dot G Y forward slash K T Z M nine I or by calling 669-900-6833 using meeting ID 879-01236126 and passcode 774980. When I call the item you wish to speak on, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon.
Okay, we get to move on to employee introductions. I believe Jimmy and Leanne. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go first. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Mr. Darrell Jordan as the Public Works Director. Darrell started with us last Monday, April 12th, and has joined us from the city of Scotts Valley. He's got more than 25 years in the field working with the cities of Merced and Serez and also some time in the private sector. He has a bachelor's degree from Cal State Fresno or Fresno State, as most people call it, I guess, and civil engineering, and he's working on his master's degree from California Coast University. He is a professional civil engineer as licensed by the state of California. Please help me in welcoming Mr. Darrell Jordan. And if Darrell, if you'd like to say a couple of words, please do so.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm glad to be here. Boy, it's been a fun ride this last week. Jimmy's got me going full bore already. We're meeting with department heads and everyone else we possibly can at COVID issues right now. And we've got a lot of exciting projects in front of us with our CIP program and with our operations program. So I'm super excited to be here. Super excited to work with Jimmy and our staff. So I can't wait to get started and get some things built here in the city and meet the rest of you when we get a chance to.
Glad to hear it. Welcome. You're very much needed. Thank you. Leanne.
Hi. Good evening, everybody, Mayor, members of the council. I am happy to be able to introduce our new fleet equipment mechanic, Miguel Rojas. Miguel, I see you there on the screen. If, I don't know if you have a camera tonight, but if you do, so we can see you and so everyone knows who you are, that would be great. If not, we'll go with your voice. Miguel began work with the city on March 29th. Miguel has worked in the automotive industry for about 18 years and really enjoys mechanic work. Prior to Gilroy, Miguel worked for a large school district with a diverse range of vehicles and equipment. He has strong experience with heavy duty equipment, which translates nicely to some of the large vehicles and apparatus in Gilroy's fleet. Miguel was interested in coming to work for Gilroy due to the different types of vehicles we have in our fleet to include police and fire vehicles. Servicing vehicles for the city allows Miguel to use his experience to ensure that our vehicles are up and running and operating safely, which then allows employees to provide important services to the community. On a personal note, Miguel is happily married to his wife, Emma, and they have five-year-old twins, Emma and Nicholas. He lives in Hollister and was born and raised in Castroville. He enjoys riding his motorcycle and rooting for the San Francisco 49ers. Miguel began his mechanic career in Gilroy in 2005 and is happy to have obtained the equipment mechanic position here with the city of Gilroy, where he hopes to stay for a very long time. Please join me in welcoming Miguel Rojas, or sorry, Miguel Ramos, sorry, to the city of Gilroy.
Welcome. We'll let the 49er thing slide, right Dion? Okay, would you like to say anything, Miguel?
You guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I don't know what's going on with my camera, but sorry about that. Just want to thank everybody for welcoming to come work for the city of Gilroy. And I'm looking forward to being here for a long time and thanks for having me. And yeah, so Leanne covered a lot, you know, I'm a family man and I live here in Hollister and I like what I do and hopefully I'll be here for a long time.
Thank you, Miguel. Yes, thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to proclamations, awards, and presentations. I have a recognition of retiring city clerk Shauna Freels. Here we go, Shauna. I know. Whereas Shauna Freels has well-served the city of Gilroy for over 14 years in the important role of city clerk. And whereas Shauna has made significant contributions to the city as it relates to agenda and legislative action processing and coordination, elections, records management, orienting and supporting newly elected officials, supporting boards and commissions and ensuring that city council actions are taken in compliance with the required laws and regulations. And whereas Shauna has been a key staff person in support of transparency in the city of governments, the city of Gilroy's open government ordinance and has provided staff support to the Open Government Commission. And whereas Shauna has retired from the position of city clerk with the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the Gilroy City Council for her years of dedicated public service to our fine city. And whereas Shauna has left her legacy as one of the public service transparency of local government and professionalism. Now therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire city council and all of the citizens and employees of Gilroy, join in thanking Shauna Freels for her commitment of service and wish her well in retirement for years to come. Thank you. Please take the floor if you would like it.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, City Council, Mayor. It seems like it was just yesterday when I zipped over from San Juan Batista to Gilroy and here I am back at home. And I have, in that 14 years, served seven city councils, which is kind of interesting and pretty amazing, such a dynamic group of people. Every city council's been so supportive of me professionally, really has supported all of the innovative ideas we've brought forward. And I've worked with so many just courageous professionals, colleagues on staff. And it's really been a wonderful 14 and a half years. And I really have to give a big shout out to Deputy City Clerk Suzanne Guzzetta, who really helped me bring our city clerk's office to the next level for Gilroy. So it's been an honor, a pleasure to serve the citizens in the city council. And I'm really looking forward to retirement, my first day today.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's interesting. People say this, we've had the status quo and yet seven different city councils in just Shauna's 14 years. That's not what I'd call status quo.
Councilmember Bracco's been with me the whole time.
Yeah, the only one. Exactly. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Shauna.
Thank you very much.
Okay, agenda item three, presentations to the council. Suzanne, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on items not on the agenda but within our jurisdiction?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone or raise your hand within the Zoom application. It appears we have no public comment at this time.
All right. Thank you. Then moving on to item A, update from the council ad hoc committee on homelessness. I think we have Councilmember Marks as the chair of the ad hoc committee who's going to give that report. Is that right?
Yes, Councilmember Bracco and I will be giving it. I want to say good evening and thank you to the mayor for introducing us. We've been at this with this committee for the past seven months. And throughout the seven months, we thought that we were beginning to learn everything there was about homeless. And then we found out we've just touched the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more that we need to study. So what we're going to do tonight is give you a little background on what we've been doing and what we hope to achieve. And then we came up with 12 recommendations that we would like to present to the council for their discussion and to give guidance to Jimmy and city staff if you would like to continue looking at these different 12 items. So I am going to, okay, so here we begin. Background. At a September 8th, 2020 homeless city council study session, city council supported the creation of an ad hoc committee. Councilmembers Marks, Bracco, and Tovar were appointed to begin discussions on the city's next steps in addressing homelessness. We had some goals. With existing limited resources, H A H C wants to make a difference in the community by supporting homeless service providers to be successful in improving the quality of life for the entire community. Addressing homelessness issues that negatively impact residents housed and unhoused, businesses, and tourism. Recommending possible solutions for city council consideration. Next, please. H A H C wanted to comprehend the magnitude of homelessness. December 2020, the ad hoc committee began meeting with homeless stakeholders to better understand everyone's needs and experiences. Stakeholders included homeless service providers, Compassion Center, Pit Stop Outreach, Salvation Army, St. Joseph's Family Center, Destination Home, homeless individuals, local businesses, homeowners, churches, Morgan Hill Housing Representative, Police Department, city staff, and code enforcement. The city of Gilroy cannot solve homelessness alone, but the city can be part of the solution. Before we go into the 12 recommendations that we came up with for your discussion, I want to let you know that not only have we been meeting twice a month once January came around, but we have, we have spent a lot of time working on the homeless issue on our own. Some of us have spent up to five hours a week extra. So I don't want anyone to think that we just met twice a month and really didn't do much. We have been interviewing people, talking, looking into other programs that we could bring to the city. So it's been a very comprehensive study. I'm going to ask for council discussion after each one of these goals. Okay, so number one, and this is a known numeric, it's not any priority prioritized at all. Establish a safe parking program. When we talked about this one, we said it would be an established organization that would run it. It would be for transitional families who are ready to move into housing, looking for jobs or in a job placement program. The safe parking program would have strict rules to guide all the people who are living in it and to keep it a safe parking facility. What we're going to ask of you right now is to discuss it and to tell us, would you like us to continue exploring options or do you want us to delete it? So what I'll do at this point, since the mayor has the raised hand signal on her end, raise your hand and then the mayor will call on you. And then Councilmember Bracco and I are going to keep, be unmuted so we can answer any of your questions also.
Okay, I see Councilmember Armand Darris's hand raised. So these are questions on just item one, right?
That's item one. Yes, just Jimmy and the city staff want direction on whether we should go forward or if we could give it.
Okay, okay, Councilmember, you're on.
Um, I support this recommendation and my question is, how many different models have you looked at? Did they include places where they have housing or folks or places where folks have their own vehicles or RVs? Or both?
We talked to the Compassion Center and as you know that they have little trailers, you know, up at the Bible Church. And we, the city of Gilroy would not be running this program. It would be the Compassion Center that would run it. So I think we would pretty much leave it up to them how they would do it. They seem to have a really good style. And probably the only thing the city would want to do if it's okay with the council is maybe contribute some funding towards their safe parking program. So it's up to council what they would really be up for if it's cars or, you know, trailers or tiny houses. In fact, that could be part of the discussion right now. Would you like?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd love to discuss it further.
Yeah, if it's okay, I think because we have 12 of these items to get through and all the council members, I'm wondering if we can just get like what Councilmember Armand Darris just said, which is a consensus for supporting the numerical item and then do a deeper dive into what exactly that means. So like, for example, I would support moving forward and looking into a safe parking program, very similar to what is happening at the Bible Church in Morgan Hill.
I think that's the best way to go personally.
Okay, and then Councilmember Tovar?
I agree with what you just said. I'll wait until we get into a deep dive if these ones, whichever is approved. So I'll hold off.
Yeah, because there's all kinds of things still, like from locations to, you know, the specifics of it. So it's just, I think what our committee needs is to know how to narrow down these 12. So, okay, I don't see any other hands. Am I right?
Mayor, do you mean we'll come back and do deeper dives on these?
If the council gives. Not tonight. What I, what I'm suggesting is, right, we give the ad hoc committee direction as to which ones of these 12 do we want? Are we all most interested in pursuing?
Well, Marie.
Yes.
Mayor. We're at the point where we're trying to find partners. You know, if we can't find anywhere to put it, then, you know, there's not a whole lot to talk about.
Understood. But you want, you want council consensus to know if you're even right. And so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ascertain whether or not we have council consensus on a safe parking program. Is, you want to do a thumbs up? Those who are, okay, so that's consensus. So I'll let Carol and Dion.
All right, I'll mark down a yes. Perfect.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Bracco, number two.
Okay, um, this one is, we were asked to put this on. And, and, and all of our meetings and all of what we've learned, affordable housing does not solve the homeless problem. Most of our homeless have zero income, so low income doesn't really help. But we do believe that anytime we have the opportunity to promote affordable housing in our community and help move it along, that we would want to keep doing that.
Okay, so the way I see that one is it addresses the housing shortage, which can lead to people becoming housing insecure, even if not completely homeless. And I certainly support more proactive efforts, especially in the areas of arena allocations where we are short. Are there any other council comments on this one or I assume this is kind of a given?
Mayor. Yes. Yeah, I think, I think for me, when we say whenever possible, I do understand what we're saying here, but when we, when you say whenever possible, to me, that's not really, how do I say it? It's not really a strong statement, you know? Something as, you know, we want to be the leader in Santa Clara County and be proactive in supporting affordable housing, something to that nature where, again, we're seen as leader in this county and we're, we're being proactive. We're being at the forefront and we're not just going to sit around and wait for things to come our way. So I think for me, just that whenever possible, it doesn't really say much for me. I mean, maybe.
I suppose, I suppose those two words could just be deleted and you still get the same thing.
Yeah, that's really not what we're doing here tonight. Tonight, we're getting consensus on the items that we want to continue working on.
Okay, so then is there consensus that, that we be proactive and support affordable housing efforts?
Yes, but Mayor, I did have one quick clarification on that. I'm just curious as to what those efforts might, might look like. Committee, do you have any thoughts as to what those might look like or are they still being explored?
They're still being explored.
Okay. All right. Well, I support it in theory, so we'll wait to get more details.
Okay, to me, it looks like, yeah, encouraging, yeah, being more encouraging of these kinds of developments. You know, when you hear of, of possibilities, but yeah, you're right. Enough said. That's for the committee. Okay, we have two number ones. Do you guys notice that?
Yes, and we're also missing an eight.
Oh, okay, fine. Then, then, then the second number one was in fact number two. Okay, you guys.
There are 12, not 13.
Right. Okay, good. Okay, Carol, Dion?
Carol, you're doing the next one?
Uh-oh, did we lose her?
Well, I'll take over then.
Okay, please Dion, thank you.
Support the mobile garbage removal program, for example, heart heal haulers. They come out, clean all the homeless hotspots. And we want to contract with one of our providers to provide this service, but it'll be, we're, we're going to be in charge. If we say they got to go clean it, they got to go clean it to get their money. Not just them kind of doing their own thing and then putting the garbage bags out on the alongside the road and then they get all opened up. And we have something else that'll come up later about that. Any questions?
Clarification, what do you mean by a mobile, you mean there'd actually be a hired somebody to go around and remove garbage?
Yes, the, for example, the Compassion Center has been doing it for about a month now. They're, they're paying for it on their own dime and they're handing out garbage bags and then once a week they go collect them. But we want to do something a little more to make a bigger dent than what we're getting right now.
And so does that mean on any property, even like property that the city doesn't own, but, but is still in Gilroy?
The homeless encampments.
Right. Good. So it would, it would include those.
Yeah.
Okay, if council members have their hands raised, I can't see.
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Armand Darris, please go ahead.
Have we, have we looked into our own staff, city staff, being able to provide this?
We're looking at it as probably going to be a partnership. Because the last, the last thing on the list is a garbage truck, but we'll get to that when we get there. So that would require, if we approve that, to have some city employees there.
A partnership like with Pit Stop or Compassion Center who already do it versus a contractor? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we want somebody that, that works with the homeless now. So the homeless are doing the, the, most of the garbage pickup.
They're cleaning up, yeah.
All right, anyone else or do we have consensus to go forward with that? Consensus meaning for the ad hoc committee to continue to pursue, right? Yes, okay, great. Number four.
Is Carol back yet?
Did she lose her connection, I wonder?
Probably did. I was having issues. I got kicked out a few times from the meeting.
Okay, she said it's completely frozen.
Okay, well, you go ahead then, Dion.
Number four. We're going to try to, whenever we can, to partner with the city of Morgan Hill.
Wait, no, no, number four is what is said, says number three.
Is a garbage compact truck.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Carol printed mine out, so it's a little bit different. This would kind of go along with the last one. Garbage compact truck. It's not one of the big garbage trucks you see around town. It's a specialty truck. It just, you see them kind of on TV in New York where they throw the trash in the back of it and it smashes it down. They can smash up couches, all kinds of, of large items that take up a lot of room. And I, you know, the county has one, the water district that they use. I think, and talking to the police department, they said this would be like big to be able to, to clean this stuff up. Because not only for the homeless stuff, it's, you know, people are dumping trash all over our city. And I think Jimmy agrees that it would be a good idea to further look into this purchase.
Jimmy.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Jimmy, in regards to this truck, I believe you've done some research on it. With the recent program that we did with the mattresses, would this truck here be the mattresses if people were to dump those?
No. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tovar. No, but that, that program is independent but complimentary as well. So we, as you know, had such great success with the first mattress. We're going to have another event in June and expect to have those every couple of months. So that should help.
Okay.
Okay, then does everyone, is everyone good with exploring the purchase of a garbage compactor truck? Okay, interrupt me, somebody if your hand is raised and I don't see it. Okay, Dion, you want to continue with, it's item five, but it says item four on our screen.
Ensure that county, state, water district, and private property owners are accountable for maintaining their properties. You know, the, the, nobody, they're just not maintaining, you know, their properties. You look at the Leesley Onramp in the 10th Street. You know, they cleaned up one side, but there's, the other side has this huge pile of trash. And what happens is if you have a pile of trash, other folks go over there and dig through it and spread it all over and cart it into someplace else. So we really need to try to put some pressure on them and try to get them to, to do their part. Because this is a, you know, early on, we figured this is a community effort. It's going to take everybody. So thoughts?
Have you found that we're, that there are certain areas where we're, where we, we could be doing something that we're not doing? Because I feel like we are putting pressure on all these people, but are we truly not?
Well, we can't go out and clean up, you know, Highway 101, you know.
No, 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 we have to put pressure on Caltrans.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm asking. So did your committee discover that we are not doing that?
Yeah, we're not in some areas. You know, we, we have some issues in our own creek out by Christmas Hill. People are calling in that, you know, there, there's feces being in the water and there's trash everywhere. And that's our preserve.
Right, no, I know. I was just wondering if you discovered something that we needed to do that we were not already doing. I understand the problem. Any other council members with, with comments on this?
I think it's a lofty goal.
Councilmember Armand Darris, okay?
Yeah, I just, I think it is a lofty goal. I, I know a lot of cities, especially small ones, struggle with trying to hold the state and other, you know, other entities accountable for this stuff, but it doesn't hurt to try.
Yeah, no, I'm in support. I'm just wondering what's going to, what's, are we going to do differently?
Mayor, can I add something as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just sort of piggyback on Dion's comments regarding, especially the private properties. Because as you all know, we did a lot of calls from. Yeah, just sort of piggyback on Dion's comments regarding, especially the private properties, because as you all know, we did a lot of calls from tenants from different businesses where their property owners aren't cleaning up sort of the garbage that's in their areas or in their, you know, where their businesses are. So I think that's something to keep in mind as well, that we need to hold these business, you know, building owners accountable as well, because the tenants are waiting for the owner to do something, and the owners think that the tenant should be cleaning stuff up. So that's where you see a lot of garbage and mess around businesses as well. So I think that's something we also should keep in mind.
And, and Mayor, I'll jump in as well, and I'll just say, I know earlier we were having a little bit of difficulty working with the water district as to who had the responsibility for cleaning up certain areas and who didn't. I see as part of this process, a part of this number, number four here, you know, really clarifying what, what, what are the legal responsibilities of all parties? Just so we know when we're talking to the county or the state or the water district, we can, you know, say, having done our research, hey, really, this is your responsibility. It's not just us asking them to do it, but it's really us reminding them of their legal responsibilities.
I think what we're, we're looking at is being able to have them at the table with us. You know, meeting regularly and keeping informed on, you know, who needs what and who, who could use some help.
Very good. I know Caltrans has regular meetings that I've been starting to attend, so that's one direct, direct way in there. Okay, good. I think we're all good with that one too, then. Onto number, what's really number six, but it's labeled number five.
Partnering with the city of Morgan Hill. That's, you know, we're thinking we could partner with them on grant opportunities and a lot of the homeless program, well, all of the homeless programs are all in Gilroy. So we need to partner with them and, and share the burden.
Agreed. Absolutely agreed.
Mayor, and Dion's absolutely correct. When we met with the representative from Morgan Hill, obviously, they shared numbers. But what Dion just said is, again, we do have a lot of resources out here, but we should not be held accountable or liable for providing resources for everybody. Yes, we do, and that's great. But we should also have Morgan Hill partner with us and be held responsible in regards to sort of assisting us as well, because we can't do it all by ourselves. And I think, again, that's where the partnership with Morgan Hill comes into play, saying, look, we're all liable here, we should be working together, and getting all the agencies together and say, let's, how can we partner with each other, not everybody doing their own separate thing. So I think it's important that we do do that.
Yeah, absolutely agree. Obviously, that needs to be defined better, but that, we're just here to let the ad hoc committee know which of these things we all support, and I would say we all support that, correct?
And also, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To add things on, if there's something the council.
Sure, let's get through them, and then, and then we'll, we'll ask that very question. We'll get to some public comment too. Okay, so Dion, I'm sorry, you're on the spot for the whole thing, but.
No, I'm back, I'm back. My laptop completely died.
Okay.
Another computer to do it. Just, just fill me in real fast. How did three, four, and five go?
They went fine. So you have council consensus, so you're on with number six. It's really number seven, but it's labeled number six.
Right. I have a question about the partnership with Morgan Hill, if that's okay?
Of course.
So would that include partnering with them on the programs that they apply for to prevent homelessness and to provide shelters?
Well, when we start working with them, we'll know more. What, what different things that we can work with and partner with, with them, you know, but we really don't know yet.
Okay.
All right, Dion, you're on for six, seven, and eight. We have this all divided up, unfortunately.
Okay.
Not a good time for that computer to die.
Continue supporting homeless service providers through the CB, CDBG grant funding. I think that's kind of a given, right?
Council, are you in agreement? What do you think? That's an easy one, that's a yes. Okay.
All right. Carol, can I, can I add for clarification? So when we say supporting homelessness, homeless service providers, I mean, that's a wide range of providers. That can be like, just, you know, for example, it's like the Compassion Center, the Salvation Army agencies that work specifically with the homeless, correct?
No, it's the, our CDBG grant funding that we do. Continue doing that, continue working with those folks.
And St. Joseph's is in there too, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Question? Uh huh. Yes. Did you all look into reinstating the NRS A funding of the CDBG grant that particularly targets the NRS A area? Which is hit hard with, with homelessness.
No, we haven't looked at that.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a huge chunk of money that, and I'm sure we have nonprofits that qualify for it.
Okay.
Mayor, Jim, can I ask you a question there?
Yes, go ahead.
Jimmy, in regards to just the CDBG funds, the care funds would also be something that we would be able to utilize for for this type of program, correct?
You know, some of the CARE-AS-Ac funds that we've had have been specific to small business, and some of them have been discretionary. So yes, that would be correct, that any, not any, but some CARES Act funds you get or, or other federal funds that we receive could go towards these programs.
Could we not, for that one there? Yes, I'm in agreement with this. Could we not sort of just, in addition to the CDBG funds, also, we add the CARE grant funds as well on there, two that we can sort of look into?
I think that goes without saying, council member, we're going to be doing the budget stuff, so that, that's a discussion for when we're doing budgeting. I think here, they're just trying to suggest that we not eliminate something that we're already doing while we're adding, while they're suggesting the addition of these other things. If I may help us move along that way. Okay, so council member support for continuing, continuing using CDBG grant funding as we do. Okay, item seven, the next seven?
Coordinate monthly check-in meetings with lead homeless service providers to address local homeless issues. One of the things we found in meeting with our service providers is none of them talk to each other. They don't know what the other one's doing, so we thought it would really make things more efficient if we had an ongoing group to meet with the service providers, the PD, code enforcement, all the stakeholders, all in one room to talk about stuff. It could be monthly, bi-monthly, we would leave that to staff.
Okay, do council members have any, sorry, Councilmember Tovar?
Well, no, yeah, no, I'm just adding to what Dion's saying. It was interesting, you know, when you, I, you know, I went and visited the Salvation Army just to sort of see what they do, and the same question was asked, you know, why aren't you all working together? And it's like, they don't have an answer for that. It's, well, they're doing their thing, we're doing our thing. But like Dion's saying, is we need them all at the same table, so, you know, they're not duplicate, well, if they're duplicating services, they just better those services, and not everyone doing their own little thing. So I think it's important for everyone to be on the table together.
I've seen in some of the best practices or cities where they have, like, the best coordination is when they have a city staff leading that, like the housings are, like Rebecca Garcia in Morgan Hill, or when they contract with a nonprofit to lead that. And I know we have a, we have good, healthy nonprofits in in this area. I would like to see one of them leading that.
I agree.
Well, one thing, council member, this group would be a little different, because you would have the police there and the service providers, and, and the service providers can alert our police to who's dealing drugs, who's lighting fires. So there would have to be some confidentiality in this group.
I mean, would that be the focus of it? Yes, this came from the service providers when we met with them, and they wanted to get together to discuss any problems that someone was having out in the encampments or just something that needed to be dealt with. And so what they suggested was this monthly meeting where everyone could get together and say any issues going on, and then this group would work towards solving that issue. If some months came along and everything was going great, then the committee would not meet. That was the thinking behind something like this. It wasn't for any other groups to come and give reports of how everything is going and the updates. It was a strict, strictly problem-solving committee. So don't we have like 911 for that? Versus, I mean, that provides confidentiality, right? That's a direct line to the police department. Yeah. Versus, the versus somewhere where the providers, the stakeholders can come together, coordinate so there's no duplication, so that it's efficient and effective, and it includes, you know, like the South County Youth Task Force, right? It goes beyond just, just reporting to the police. I mean, we have other methods and ways of doing that. It's just not reporting to the police, maybe, okay, I'll just throw this out as an example. Maybe Compassion Center doesn't offer showers on a regular basis, because maybe something has come up where they can't. Salvation Army would say, okay, we can pick up some of the days. You know, it's an opportunity for them to get together and just talk. Maybe there is a problem in the encampments. Maybe each of these service providers would say, okay, this is what we can do to help alleviate it. We'll work as a partnership. They wanted an avenue to get together and just talk to see how everything was going and how they could better support each other. That was the thinking behind this. And like I said, this came from the actual service providers.
Is the key on, just a second, I'm sorry, who is supposed to be, okay, Councilmember Tovar and then Councilmember Armendaras, then you can continue, okay? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, and no, this is a great suggestion here, and I think, for me, I mean, currently, you know, when you talk about the Compassion Center and the Water District, currently, I think they do meet monthly, but I think, for me, this is where we all, like Carol's saying, everyone comes together, we start to explore what everybody's doing, what everybody's not doing. So we're all working together hand in hand. So I think that's the way I see it, is, you know, we participate, we join, we help coordinate these meetings with the other agencies and see what they're doing, or what's not being done, and we see how we can get those other things accomplished. So it's just in addition to sort of, you know, bringing everybody together, just find out how everyone can work together. So that's how I see it.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras, followed by Councilmember Hilton.
I know that, because I get the emails, that the South, there's a South County Homeless Task Force, and it meets monthly or more often, and they do have a check-in time with the police department, so. So, what, and it's where providers, you know, coordinate and stuff, also share resources and information, and they do have a time that they spend with the police department as, as well, so. They didn't want that.
We talked about that.
I'm saying, it already exists, it's been, it's been like ten years, yeah. Right, 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 but they did not want to share this kind of information at, at that particular meeting.
And we talked about that too. It doesn't, they don't have really good participation. They've had the same chairperson for ten years. We want this city-led, where they, they meet, you know, like at City Hall, and more accountability, more, you know, more open dialogue with everybody that's involved.
And you know, another positive that I just thought of, this could also tie into our grant funding, you know, as a council, we've been saying, we don't know if the grant funding is being spent properly. Now's the time to, you know, sit at one of these meetings to say, hey, how is it going with the money? You know, how, how is it being spent? Just kind of as a little check-in, a little nudge to make sure that it's being spent appropriately.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blinkley. I think that I, I understand where you guys are trying to go with the, with the meets and have it city-led. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. But I want to go back and, and really just chime in that, that we need to have a housing manager. There needs to be a position in staff that, that oversees all this. You can't just have, you know, one director jump in for a moment and then have another one cover it, and then maybe have Jimmy cover it, and then an analyst cover it. That has to be one person. That's really the only way that I would really support something like this, and I think that, that will get done, because that one person will have knowledge of, just like you said, the grant funding, and all the partners be able to come together, but have the realistic, or have a background on housing and homeless services at the same exact time. Thank you.
So Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the closest we have to that type of coordinator position right now is Maria De Leon. And when she doesn't have her hands so full with pandemic issues, that has just been absolutely crazy since this pandemic started. I mean, she just might shine pretty darn well in that, in that role. To actually hire a separate person gets back to the budget thing, like the question that Councilmember Tovar had earlier, then the money's going to have to come from something else. But we do have a position that could lead us in the direction that our ad hoc committee is suggesting we go, and at the request of our service providers, and so maybe, I don't know, I'm just saying that her, her hands are so full right now with pandemic stuff that she hasn't even had a chance to, to, to do, to do the other things that could really be of benefit. All right, so with that, again, we're not getting any details on any of these things, but we're letting our ad hoc committee know, yay, we're, we're good so far with, with these, right? Moving on to item nine, I think we are actually caught up with the numbers now.
Okay, organization of community cleanup days. We know the Rotary does, I think, one or two cleanup days down at Yubis Creek, but we were talking about, it would be really nice to get more of the community members involved in cleaning up and helping to clean up the city. So we were thinking of maybe quarterly or even monthly, depending on, you know, the enthusiasm. Would the council like us to pursue something like this? And we could certainly work through the service agencies to help us out. Or any of the clubs in Gilroy to help us out. It doesn't matter. It's just, do you want us to promote more community cleanup days?
And anybody have thoughts?
I would say sure. Community cleanup days are great for morale, for pride. Yeah, I've just, I'm not sure about their impact on, on homelessness, right? But, but they'll make the neighborhoods look better.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, Jimmy, if you can remind me, when we did the mattress cleanup, what did that cost us as a city?
Well, it was initially designed not to cost the city anything. Unfortunately, the amount of demand far exceeded what the service provider was able to do that day, so the city did spend time and, and the next couple of days doing it. But going forward, knowing that there's that pent-up demand, we don't expect that to occur again. So it's funded through the mattress council and funded through the $12.50 you pay for recycling when you buy a new mattress.
Right, and, and the reason why I asked that question, Jimmy, I know, I know, because I worked with you. But, I mean, things like that we can do, that it's just not all on community. I agree. I think we need to organize more community cleanup days. You know, we participated well with the Rotary. I think we need to continue to do that, but also let's make sure we partner with other companies, agencies that may be willing to sponsor these type of events as well.
Doesn't Recology usually do that? Sorry, sorry, yeah, I cut you off.
No, I was just going to, I, I don't know how much, go ahead, go ahead and answer a question, Jimmy.
Yes, that, that's correct, Miss Armendaras. Recology does do things like that. They've been a good partner. They helped us out when we got overwhelmed with all the mattresses. So we certainly want to spend some time. So, um, we certainly, uh, want to spend some time working with them to do more.
Okay, so committee, do you need any more direction than what you've just heard on that one? Okay, okay, then you can move on to item ten.
Okay, that one's mine.
That's a yes.
Endorsement of Destination Homes Community Plan and Homelessness. Um, we met quite a bit on this, um, we really dived into it. Um, I don't care either way because thi- this is a, pretty much a politician thing, bare minimum. So somebody can say, oh, look, I'm doing something, I care. Um, but what we really looked into was would it hurt us? And we didn't find that it, it would hurt us. And one of the things that, um, does stand out with Destination Home is they have, uh, big dollar donors up in Silicon Valley. You know, the Googles, the Apples, those kinds of things. So, so they have the ability to raise money for other things. And what, what came to my mind was the possibility of getting them to fund like a drug rehab or something in South County. Because I don't know if most of you know, right now, say the Compassion Center, get someone, they want to stop using drugs, they have to be clean three days. So they take them to a motel, then when they're clean, they take them up to San Francisco and they're told, oh, sorry, no more vacancies till next month. So that's one of the reasons I, I thought it might be a really good idea. But, um, it doesn't hurt the, to join it. Um, I would want Andy to look at it and, and just to double check and make sure.
Council?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Tovar, you've got something over the camera, I can't see.
No, 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 sorry, I'm having issues, um, so I can't see everybody.
Okay, we can hear you.
Yeah, in regard to this one here, I mean, what Dion mentioned, that's sort of his, his personal take on it. For me, you know, with the group, is I'm in support of Destination Home. But in addition to that, I would like to see us have another or a, a game plan in place as well. You know, we go with Destination Home, but we're also going to see A, B, C, and D. If, even if that city sort of sponsored, I would like to see more than just us supporting Destination Home. I think having other solutions or recommendations or programs that we as a city, um, are taking a lead on would be what I would recommend. Again, um, you know, I, I am in support of this, but I would also like us to see other, um, recommendations or programs in place as well.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton, I see your hand.
Well, I, I, then I'll put it, I'll throw it back on the ad hoc committee. What, what are your programs and services that you want the city to partner in on and provide? Because I haven't seen any of those listed yet.
Okay, I'm not sure what you actually mean by that. We talked about safe parking. Um, some of the services, we talked about, you know, it's not just all about housing the homeless, it's also about, uh, dealing with the citizens of Gilroy who want the trash removal, uh, and, and a cleaner environment. You know, we're trying right now to balance the two extremes. Um, whatever, we're not here to, to say what the city of Gilroy is going to provide. We're here to serve as a link between what the service agencies can provide for the city of Gilroy. And we can't tell them what to do. So I'm a little confused about what you're looking for. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Um, I, I'll put it back on Councilmember Tovar. What did you mean? You want to do more than just this community plan and homelessness? You want to have A, B, and C programs and services that the city's responsible for? I, I can't, I can't remember the exact words, but what did you mean by that?
Councilmember Tovar, are you still with us? He's having audio issues, I think.
Um, I'll, I'll throw out two of them because there's, there's none, there, we're not going into any of those other ones. And it has to do with the community plan and homelessness. Did you guys discuss at all what the county does as far as like outreach workers going into, um, you know, the creeks and making contact with either families to do rapid rehousing? Um, or just general outreach to get them into the, the homeless database? And, and, because that's something the city of Morgan Hill does and other cities do to partner. Um, and that's just a shared cost that you pay back to the county. That's not something that we need a city staff member to do, but that is something that we would need our general fund more than likely to, to pay into. Did you guys?
We didn't talk about, we didn't talk about funding stuff. Uh, but we did, you're right, they, they do have a much better, uh, uh, program that goes out and counts the homeless and really digs down and gets a lot more information. But we didn't go into funding or anything like that, no.
Okay, when the time is right, those are two programs that I'd like to add to this list when you're, when you're through with yours.
Along.
Okay, Councilmember Armadars?
Yeah, along those same lines, I'm wondering, uh, because I see that five of these points and, and I, I know maybe we should get through the last couple, um, but five of these are about, um, about the superficial, you know, cleanliness and image of the city versus, um, versus prevention or, or intervention or solution to homelessness. And so I'm hoping we can dig our teeth in a little bit more. Um, we can look at things that prevent, you know, policies and, and real tangible things that prevent homelessness and, and help with the intervention to house people. So, um, I guess my question is, are, is this, um, is this the, uh, end of the committee's recommendations? Or do you, are you going to, is it going to keep going and bring back more?
Well, we do have number eleven, which I think is real powerful. I don't want to name the agency just yet because we're meeting with the agency next month. And this agency did express interest in inputting a, a facility, um, inputting a facility in South County. And we'll know more in May that we could bring back hopefully to the council. Um, can I do number eleven and talk just a little bit about it?
Yeah, of course, let me just get us past number ten first, okay? Because what, what I, what I hear in number ten from the ad hoc committee is there's no downside. There, there may not be that much of an upside. I myself wonder, you know, we're, we're asked to just, uh, endorse things all the time and it doesn't, it's nothing specific. But there is no downside, so that's, that's great. Uh, we do have, we do have things that we've talked about like safe parking. It would be great to have a drug rehab center, you know, something that we could do. And then when you're going to get to number eleven, that's great too. And get, be more proactive about the extremely low income housing, even though I know some people are saying that doesn't help the homeless. Well, it does, that, that is part, part of the problem is the housing shortage that we do have. So we are addressing, we are addressing those things. Uh, it sounds to me like we have consensus to move on from ten in a positive, that we are all in consensus to keep item ten there. Is that, am I correct in that, so that we can now?
That is, that is correct, mayor. And I, well, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but it's correct on my end. But I, I think also Councilmember Bracco noted the fact that this would put us in alignment with well-financed groups that are also supporting this program. I know that he mentioned that as well. So that's just another reason why this might open a few more doors of opportunity.
Very, very good. And the, the other thing too is when it comes to outreach, you know, going into outreach into the creeks and things like that, as someone referred to. I know that they, they aren't exactly county employees doing that, they're county, um, contracted people. So it's, it's not that the county has employees doing this, but it's a contracted, uh, program, usually through nonprofits. So in the end, it still comes back to the nonprofits on those things too.
It's Destination Home that does it right now, mayor.
Okay, there you go.
For, for the cities that belong to it.
So they are not, right, then that's not a county employee agency.
No, huh.
Right.
Well, the, the Office of Supporting, staff at the Office of Supportive Housing also do it. Right, they, they participate in and they coordinate it.
Okay, all right. So moving on then to item eleven.
Okay, item eleven. Uh, Councilmember Bracco, did you get a chance to talk about the three groups of homelessness while I was offline?
No.
Why don't you go ahead and do that right now as an intro to number eleven, then I'll take over.
Okay, um, there, there, there's, you can put all the homeless folks into three categories. There's those that recently became homeless because of COVID or just lost their job or, or whatever the case may be. And with, with, uh, a hand up, they, they can get back on their feet. And then you have the, the next group, they're a little tougher. They, they, they're going to require, you know, some drug rehab, mental health, but they, they want it. So we can assist in that with getting them to the right people that can help them. You know, hopefully having a drug rehab that can help them. And then there, there's those that, the final category are the ones that, you know, they, they're happy with the way they're living and, but having compassion, you don't want to see anybody living that bad. Um, and, and, you know, there, there's a, there's a, a lot more to it, you know? There, there's things that go on in the homeless community that people don't want to talk about. But if, if we're ever gonna, uh, um, help with this issue, we, we've got to talk about this stuff. You know, there are people that they don't want anybody's help, they just want to be left alone. Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, so we really believe one of the root causes is, um, mental illness and, um, drug and alcohol abuse. And with the second group that, uh, Councilmember Bracco was talking about, they want help, but they don't know where to go. And we think it's real important to have a drug rehab, uh, center down here in South County to address the issues. Um, we, and part of this agency's job is to do job training, job placement, and they focus on males. So, you know, maybe we could expand it as we get going into, you know, with females also. Because our whole goal is to get people back on their feet and get them functioning on their own again. And I don't feel like they're getting the help they need. Two hours a week of counseling is not doing it, they need a longer support system. So if you tell us to go ahead and research this agency, I hope that we can come back to you in June and tell you all the details and with some really good news that they would be willing to work with us. So you, you tell us what you would like.
I support it.
I'm up for it.
Okay, it sounds like we have the consensus. No, um, it sounds like we have a consensus, so, yes.
Well, I wouldn't make that assumption.
I know, but you hadn't raised your hand either. So Councilmember Armadars, she would like to speak?
Thank you, um. I, I know that we are in an area where there are lots of, um, great nonprofits, lots of great services. And we're also part of a county that provides, um, that provides that and contracts with a number of, of great providers. Um, I want to make sure that we have, um, before we focus on one nonprofit or one particular program, that we are, we know, uh, and we discuss what it is we want to see in something like this. If we're going to use public money and public time, um, then there, there has to be, um, a bidding process, there has to be. I mean, if they're a private entity that wants to come and locate, well, of course.
I can answer that question right now for you.
That would be wonderful, right? It's, it's their, at their liberty to do that. But if we're going to look for, for contracting somebody and supporting somebody with our, with our public monies, then we do have to make sure that, um, they're vetted and, and.
Right, no, you're going to be, you're going to be excited.
You know, uh, a due process in terms of bidding and, um, RFPs, things like that.
We don't have to go that far with them. You're going to be really excited with them. They had, they do all private funding and they're a, a well-known group. But I, I.
I was just going to say.
So you're going to be pleased, you're going to be pleased.
It's not, right.
They agree.
Not talking about public dollars, right?
I'm talking about public dollars, they don't need anything from the city of Gilroy. So that is really, that's exciting. And if it means helping a hundred of, of the people, then that, that's real good. So if you give us the go-ahead, we will go and talk to them and do a tour of the facility, which I want to do anyway, even if you say no to it, I just want to do it for myself. Um, so do we have consensus on that?
Okay, I don't see anybody, yeah, do we have consensus then? Um, I, I don't see anything from Mr. Hilton and I, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing anything from Councilmember Armadars. Do we have the other five giving consensus?
That's not consensus.
Five is not consensus?
No.
Consensus, five is a majority?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, if, if consensus means unanimous, um, you know, I don't know that consensus means unanimous, but, uh.
It does, yeah.
Okay, very good, then I'll stop using that word because we're, very little is going to be unanimous. Do you have another comment, Councilmember?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, are you looking, um, you know, for, for Fred, Carol, and Dion? Are you looking at other, um, agencies or did you just find one? And what would be our role if they don't need public dollars?
We're looking at anything. We're asking you, do you want us to go out and look at this? We want to try to find private funding to build it. We, the city doesn't have money to put into a drug rehab. But if we could find, you know, we actually have a few high-dollar people here in Gilroy that may want to, uh, get their name on a building or something. But we, we, we don't know anything yet. We just want, we, we actually thought there would be people on the council that don't want a drug rehab in the area and that's that. So we didn't want to get too far into it until we know how, what the council wants.
Yeah, well, so much depends on the details that come back, but I certainly am one who supports moving forward. And consensus, by the way, means general agreement. It does not mean absolute agreement. So it is not a unanimous thing to have consensus, it means a majority.
I was just going to look at that too.
Yeah.
Majority, but we could put that on an agenda for another time.
Mayor, can I, uh, can I ask a question of clarification?
Yes, Councilmember Tovar.
No, and I, 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 I completely understand what Councilmember Armadars is saying. I think when Carol presented it, she's talking about one sort of agency. And I think that's may, may have sort of, um, made Councilmember Armadars think that one's already been selected.
No, no.
No, 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 I'm just, yeah, I'm just clarifying things. And I think it's, again, like Dion said, you know, this is one of ma- maybe many others, you know, but this is one in particular. So I want to clarify that there's no decision on, we're going with this agency and that's it. It's, let's take a look at what they're doing. If it's something that works, great, if not, we'll find somewhere else. Um, again, it's not just one individual or one age we're looking at.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to call it consensus on that one, even though there's been plenty of comment. And, uh, moving on to number twelve, because I, I would like to get to public comment too, or, or whatever other council members want to add. Number twelve?
Uh, Councilmember Bracco?
Okay, um, this, this came about, I had a lady, a homeless lady, tell me, uh, some things that happened a, a, and the homeless camp. And she asked me, she goes, don't the police patrol your neighborhood? I said, yeah, she goes, they, they make sure you're safe, what about us? We never get to see a police officer. And, um, so we, we talked about it at our meeting and I think it would be a good idea, an officer, this is his job. And he works with our local nonprofits, goes with them when they go into the, the encampments for their safety. And he's, he, him or her, they, they form a relationship with our homeless residents. And a lot of things will come out of that. They, they, they could feel safe to talk to the officer, to pass information on. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know how much everybody here knows what goes on in the homeless camps. The homeless camps, don't get me wrong, uh, most homeless are really good people. And you'd be surprised if you ever sit down and talk to them, that, some of them are really amazing. But there is a criminal element. But there is a criminal element that has, the, has found a, a good hiding spot. It's, you know, there's some wolves in with the sheep. And they cause problems. They're dealing drugs, they're, they're, they're lighting fires, they're stealing. And if an officer, you know, I think about like this, if you're dealing drugs, the last thing you're going to want to do is hang around somewhere where a couple, two, three times a week an officer walks by and is checking on everybody. So I, I think it would, it would be a pilot program, but I think it would go a long way. But if we decide to do this, we need to really be serious because we've done it before and every time things get tough, that's the first position we cut. You know, i- i- we have to, um, most of this, all of this stuff on this list, if we're gonna do it, we really gotta, uh, uh, commit and have a serious buy-in from the council.
So Dionne, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in if I might real quick. I see this as kind of a corollary to the role we were talking about or that came up in discussion earlier with around housing issues, things like that, where I don't know if it's something that maybe can be combined into two roles or something like that, but I, the, the, I see this as a, as a global position that touches on a lot of different departments. So that's the way, at least at present, I'm looking at this role.
No, Peter, this would be a, a sworn police officer.
Oh, not a CSO?
Uh, that's, okay, then that's, that's different than what I thought. Okay.
It's different than what I thought too.
Well, it'd be up to the police department how they want to handle it, but
Okay.
what we have talked about so far is a, a police officer.
This request came from the service providers. And also, I know Dionne said he spoke to one homeless woman. This also came up from a variety of homeless people from different encampments that, um, talked to us. And there is apparently a pretty high crime rate in some of the encampments. And the women will say they don't sleep at all at night for fear of who's coming in through their tent flat.
Thursday, uh, on Thursday night, on Thursday night, a young woman got raped and beaten out, out in the encampment. Um, and when I was at the Compassion Center and told them about this, they got really excited about it. Most of the, uh, well, all of them that go out and work with the homeless, they're all women. You know, they take a taser with them, but they, they've had some incidents that have really scared them bad. And th- there's some bad things that go on.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Um, I don't support the hiring of an officer to do this, um, but I do support hiring a, uh, housing manager, um, position. Thank you.
Okay, any other hands raised? Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, so you know, when, when I gave my input on this position here, I, I saw it as what is being discussed in regards to, um, having, having a presence in the encampments, but that this individual or these individuals would also, um, patrol the city and businesses and help sort of businesses and, you know, individuals that may be there, they may need assistance, other homeless individuals that may be camped out and, uh, behind different businesses. So it would not be specific, this is my own take on it. It would not be specifically just at the encampments, but it would be patrolling the entire city. And if, because as you know, we get a lot of business owners that call us and say, hey, you know, there's, you know, a homeless camp behind my building. I can't do anything. So it would be sort of a, a mixed type of sort of role where they would be working throughout the city and not just one specific area.
Correct. Okay, um, correct me if I'm, I'm sorry, I don't see any other hand. Oh. Yeah, no, your hand is raised, but it's a color of your background, so I don't see it. So, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I, um, when I think about a quality of life officer, I, um, I would suggest that it be more like a CSO, a community service officer, who is armed with, um, resources and information and knows which, um, service provider, which nonprofit provides what, um, somebody who would lead, um, you know, the, and coordinate the, the check-in meetings that we were talking about earlier. Somebody who is, who is a resource, right? Somebody who is, because I think if we, um, focus them on policing, then we end up criminalizing, criminalizing our, our folks who are, um, you know, who are homeless, um, our folks who are in poverty, right? Um, because that, that's the leading cause of homelessness, right, is poverty. Um, and so I want to stay away from criminalizing them or, uh, criminalizing their presence in our community at our, at our, you know, in our downtown or at our businesses, if they're just existing and they happen to be homeless. I think we need to focus on, if we're going to spend money on it, then we need to make sure that it's somebody who can provide resources and services and information and help connect them to that.
So you don't believe that our homeless residents deserve the same, uh, safety that the rest of us enjoy?
Absolutely, and we have a police department for that.
And they can call 911 at any time too.
I, I, you know, I'm on Los Animas and if I could, Mayor, uh, I'm on Los Animas and, um, we have a number of RVs here now and I'm right near the Compassion Center in Tompkins Court. Um, and we have PD and the sheriff coming out here all the time. And so they get, um, folks are, are even overpoliced, but I would love to see, somebody dedicated to sexual assault. It could be a female officer. It could be a female CSO, somebody who can be, um, a resource for, because like you mentioned, there, there, there's a lot of sexual assault in the encampments and, and, and they need help and information with that.
Okay, I'm gonna chime in because I was, starting out, I would have agreed with what Councilmember Armadara was saying in that I was envisioning more of a CSO because they can still carry, they are still law enforcement. They do have that, that presence. Um, but I, for very different reasons. I think it's because the very people there are, are not only feeling unsafe and asked our ad hoc committee for it, but also because so many of the calls to the PD goes, well, 427 in the last two years were specific to where the Compassion Center is alone. That's a lot of calls and therefore warrants cer- certainly something like a CSO to have, have a better presence there. I, I don't see it as the reasons that Councilmember Armadara says, but nor do I see that it needs to be a sworn officer. That's just my position. I think you can have two CSOs, you know, instead of a one sworn officer. And it's probably safer for the officers to be in pairs too, when they're, when they're doing this. But because, um, homeless's encampments, places where people are not supposed to be but are, tend to have more calls to the police than the general city. That's all. Because of that and because of the findings of the ad hoc committee, that the request is there from the people living there, I, to me, that's something to, to support considering. Whether or not that's something we end up with is another story, but this is where we are in this. They're just, we're trying to get feedback. So that's, that's my feedback on this side.
I, I was kind of also under the impression that it's going to be a CSO role. Um, so I would ask that if the, if the commission, if the, if the recommendation to the commission is that they explore this, that we explore the differences between, uh, you know, a, a standard police officer and a CSO, just to, to understand what that, what that role would look like, one versus the other. I, I think I also agree in the sense that I think there are unique challenges within the, within the unhoused community. I think to, to assume otherwise is just not realistic. The same way we try to be thoughtful and responsive to each of our different and distinct communities. I think this is one such community. Um, and, and I very much fully agree that they are deserving of the protection, much like any other group within the community, and they have their needs. And so we've got to make sure we understand fully what those needs are in order to provide them that protection. So I, I just want a better understanding of whether it's going to be a police officer versus what it would look like if it's CSO.
Well, I think what, what we would, uh, where we would go from here is next, our police chief would give us a report and let us know what the different options are and the cost and all that.
That, that would be fine to me.
All right. So again, looking for a, a, a majority here to, uh, to continue to explore, um, item 12. Okay, very good. We've got it. All right. So now, uh, before I, I would like to go to public comment, but, um, Mr. Hilton, did you want to, um, you said you wanted to add something to this? Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mary Blankley. Um, so I just, I'd like to be able, uh, for us to consider partnering with the county like we talked about before. Officers supportive housing is one of those resources, but look into the county that's not working with a nonprofit um, to do a county homeless outreach workers, right? They would conduct interviews and assessments, those to make contact in our creeks to get them into our system. Having these automatic programs funded out of our general fund when we don't have to necessarily play a part in it, but they're continuously do it, I think is, is something that it's a hands-off and it's not very expensive, our share into that program. The city of Morgan Hill does this. And I'm sure that the, the committee has talked to them or if they want to, they can talk to Rebecca Garcia about that. The other one is the ongoing county rapid rehousing program, which, uh, Councilmember Braco talked about this, where you can catch those that are about to slip into homelessness and, um, get them out. There is a county program, um, that, that we can pay our, our fair share into that um, and get that, and get that done. Those are my two suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, ad hoc committee, would you like to comment first on each of those things? I certainly have my comments on them, but would you like to go first?
I, I think, well.
Yeah. No, go ahead, Dionne.
Okay, I think they both sound good. Um, uh, we can, uh, get the information and bring it back to the council. That seems pretty.
Exactly what I would say. I would want to know how much it costs. Because I was listening to, uh, Morgan Hill's, uh, South County, a plan to end homelessness. And I was really surprised about the difference in numbers that the two cities have in regards to how many homeless we have in our cities. According to the 2019 census, Morgan Hill has 114 and we have 704. So I don't think we're going to pay the same amount of money as Morgan Hill is paying for this service. And I just have a concern about using general, um, of money from the general fund because, yeah, that's paid by all taxpayers and.
Let's save, let's save that, Carol, for, for budget talk. I just, if you don't mind. Okay, Councilmember Armadara has her hand raised too on this?
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to, um, see if we can explore policies that help prevent homelessness, including, um, language around, um, um, just cause evictions, around rent stabilization, programs like that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean, Rebecca, I just, I want to know how we're going forward with what Councilmember Hilton just said. So can we address those? If you're adding on top of that, can we get to that in a second? Right now, I need to know if we have a consensus on the two things that he just added.
Oh, then I support those, yes.
Okay, so is there consensus there? Everybody? Good? Okay, I'm good with that too. I'm just holding off on any budget stuff because what Morgan Hill can afford and Gilroy can afford, they're very different because the, the two budgets are very different. And I'm not even going to go into that. But you have to look at all the different things the city pays for. You can't just pick out one or two things and say, well, they can pay for this. Well, it's because they're not paying for that. And maybe Gilroy is. So those are the things you've got to look at when it comes to the money. Okay, so we're good with what Councilmember Hilton suggested. Councilmember Armadara, now what would you like to add?
Yeah, I'd like, uh, first to explore, uh, homelessness prevention policies like, um, just cause evictions, like rent stabilization. I know that we have assistance, rental assistance, a limited rental assistance program and programs like Project Sentinel, but I'd like to look into what more the city could do to prevent homelessness. And I'd like us to explore, uh, what kind of zoning changes we need, like zoning overlays that would allow for folks to build tiny homes. And then stuff that is related to, uh, families that are currently unhoused because I, I don't see very much centered around them. So I'd love to, to, if we could continue to explore that stuff.
Rebecca, I'm taking notes and, well, I'm sorry, let me just, I need to get her, the second thing you said, I was writing really fast. Um, it was after just cause evictions. What was that?
Rent stabilization.
Thank you.
As a policy.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Armadara, um, when we started, I, our focus really was, it still is, on women and families. That's, that's where we, we wanted our focus to be on the, uh, is our top priorities.
Okay, I'd like to see more meat on that bone then, for women and families.
Would you be, would you want us to investigate any property that could be used for mobile homes, trailers, RVs?
As part of safe parking or as part of?
No, I mean, as an actual, you know, where tiny homes we built also offers something as a, a, an RV mobile home park for homeless. Would you want us to explore that?
I, I know that all the mobile home parks are full and the RV parking, um.
Create a new one.
Places are, are full, right? But I, I thought we had passed a policy when I was on planning commission that we weren't going to permit any more of those.
Oh, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I'm just going to speak for myself here. I would prefer we just stick with the list of 14 that we have and try to make headway there because these, these last two go and they're, they're, they're bigger things and go in a different direction. And I understand what Councilmember Armadara is trying to achieve, but I think if we, the more things we try to pile on, the less effective we're going to be at any of them. So I would like to see us look at the, we have 14 now. Um, if it's okay with council, we'll stick to those. And, uh, we still haven't heard public comment. Uh, if, if other council members can speak if they want. Councilmember Armadara just threw two things out. Does someone else want to say something about it? Okay, I'm seeing, seeing none? Okay, so ad hoc committee, you've got the 14 right now. I'm going to go to Suzanne and ask for public comment first. Suzanne, I'm going to ask, can you tell how many people are in the queue to want to speak?
Uh, right now, it looks like we have about five, but more people are raising their hands, six, seven.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to ask if we can, if we can, um, shorten the, the time because we, we've already been at this for an hour and a half. And I will ask the public to please share your thoughts, you know, yea or nay on, on what, whether you support or don't support things we've talked about. If you could at all possible not, uh, repeat yourselves in, in the duration of the length of time as best you can. I'm just trying to manage this as best I can. Um, I, Suzanne, can you keep time for people or do you need me to?
I'll be keeping time.
Okay, so let's start with two minutes and then see, if we get too many more people, then we'll go down to one minute. But I think we can start with two and let people speak.
All right. Uh, so the first speaker is named Sarah. Sarah, I'm going to hit allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Sarah.
Can you hear me? Yes. Yes, hello, city council. Thank you so much for the work you're doing on this issue. Uh, it's greatly appreciated and I recognize that it's a really large, complex problem. But in my statement today, I've tried to make it succinct. I want to focus your attention um, on a really state of the union in my neighborhood, okay? Um, I live near the intersection of Uves Park and Laurel Drive, which is an entry point into the Dennis De Bell Uves Creek Preserve. My house has been vandalized and property stolen out of my car and off my front porch by the homeless people who live in and travel through the preserve via Laurel Drive. My neighbors and I too frequently exchange stories about these experiences. Our houses and cars are cased. Every day I see people walking up and down the street looking on who they're going to prey on next. I also see a regular stream of junk brought into the preserve by homeless who wheel shopping carts full of trash past our house on a regular basis. I also see cars parked by the preserve entrance and unload bags and bags of junk, which is then carted into the encampments. The sight and smell of these trash encampments, is what I'm calling them, is very upsetting. I frequently worry about my safety, but also I worry about the effects, the effects of all this trash on the entire Uves watershed. I believe there are at least 10 to 15 homeless encampments in the creek at this time. I can't walk in the preserve without seeing homeless encampments in every direction. I fear for my safety and the safety of the families who are trying to enjoy the preserve. I have seen people tripping on drugs and acting in ways that are absolutely terrifying. I have seen people tripping on drugs and acting in ways that are absolutely terrifying. One encounter I will never forget. One afternoon, I heard a woman screaming from an area with an encampment in the preserve near Santa Teresa Boulevard. She sounded like she was literally being murdered. It was terrifying. It was extremely upsetting to myself and the adults and children who were in the park that afternoon, when someone went Are we, am I low on time?
It's over, yeah, it's over two minutes.
I understood it was, I understood it was three minutes. What I want to say is, when I call the police, they're really reluctant to do anything. They're frustrated. They say, our hands are tied, we can't do anything, go to city council. I want to bring your attention to this section of the city. This is where the Gilroy Garlic Festival shooter parked his car two houses down from my house. This is a hotspot in the city. And I would recommend, if possible, maybe a surveillance camera that would deter people from this egress. There's egress in and out of the park from this point. And people are, every day I see them coming in and out. And as I've said, I've been the victim of crime. I understand not everybody is criminals, but they're certainly attracted to this point in the city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for calling our attention to that.
Mayor, can I ask you, I'm not trying to respond to the comments.
Okay, it's public comment time, so yeah.
Yeah, no, no, is it possible that when we have a speaker that they could show their, their face so we can, we can see who's speaking like we do?
Some might not have a camera though Fred.
Possible.
Calling from a telephone.
Um, in order to do that, they would have to be promoted to panelists and they would then be able to share their screens.
Yeah, so no. Okay, next, next speaker.
The next speaker is going to be Phil Coucher. I'm hitting allowed to talk now Phil. You may unmute yourself.
Mayor Blankley, members of the council, this is Phil Coucher. I'm Joe Manager of Recology. I've been listening to your discussion and want you to know that, you know, we are happy to partner with the city. We work extensively with the Compassion Center at this point. And have, on a number of occasions, worked with community groups. Just this past weekend, we sponsored a Rotary cleanup. We were major sponsors of, of Cheer. Some of you may be familiar with Cheer, the, the, the organization that cleans up the creeks. You know, we're if there's something we do well, we pick up garbage well. So
And we love you for it.
If, if there's, if there's, you know, something that we can do to help, we can't do it ourselves, but we would be more than glad to, to help the city out.
Thank you, thank you Phil. Okay, next speaker.
Yes, the next speaker is going to be Jen Bernstein Chargan. I am hitting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Jen.
Hi, and thank you. I'm going to be quick. First of all, glad to see that having city staff take over the homeless task force is on your list. I've been doing this for 10 years as a volunteer and with the, actually, actually since Chief Turner left. And be wonderful to have city staff. In the beginning, when Chief Turner was there, we did have city staff support, just so you know. We've always had a confidential case management portion of that building, of that meeting at the beginning, where Gilroy PD can bring concerns to service providers. So that's number one, I think, great. Let's have city staff on that. Two, thank you for supporting the safe parking program. Three, I think the officer should be a community service officer, not, you know, what, what people really need is a way to confidentially report if something's happened to them. You know, they don't need a lot of attention, they don't need lights and sirens, they just need somebody to talk to. Three, I think, you know, outreach. Outreach workers though are safe, you know, for myself, I, I do outreach and, you know, with a team and know what we're doing and I, I have never felt unsafe doing that at all. And the other thing is, if the ad hoc committee is going to continue to meet, I, I would like to strongly request that the minutes and agendas be posted so the public can at least see what the committee's talking about. I think it would be so good for people just to see what's on the agenda. And I know as an ad hoc committee, the Brown Act doesn't require the posting of minutes and agendas, but it does permit it. And by letting the public see what is being discussed, it would give us all, you know, a lot of confidence in how this is going. Also know how we could approach the ad hoc committee if there's information we want to bring to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is going to be Morris Michael. I am hitting allowed to talk. You may unmute yourself, Morris.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members. Sorry for my accent. I'm originally from Israel. And so my, my question is like, I think like one of the council members mentioned that he went and talked to the homeless people. I wanted to know like, of these homeless people, do we know like how many of them are addicted and mentally ill? And also, do we think that housing will solve the problem for them?
Okay, I don't know if you're looking for, those are, that's exactly what we're working on. Where, where housing is one of the things. And yes, there is drug and alcohol addiction and mental illness in there. The, the how many is, you know, not a number you can, we, we don't have a specific number. That's what we are working to address. It's the best answer I can give you there.
Do we also like families?
Does someone from the ad hoc committee want to try to answer his question before I move on?
Public comment.
I said to someone from the, what do you mean?
Asking, are there families? I, I missed the last part of his question. Are there families who are addicted? Is that what he's asking?
No, we have families that are homeless in the encampments.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, next speaker.
Next speaker is going to be Abe Barrera. I am hitting allowed to talk. You may unmute yourself, Abe.
Thank you. Hi, council members and Mayor Blankley. I'm a law student from Santa Clara University and I've had the pleasure of speaking with a few of you. Unfortunately, I did not jump on time in terms of when you guys voted for the safe parking. However, I wanted to share some of the work that I've been doing for my class. I've done some research of the city of Gilroy and safe parking and, in particular, working with the Compassion Center. Their program is very successful. They have around a 58% success rate with the individuals that they do work with. And so if you guys were to move forward with that, I think you guys would be able to help a lot of people. And so I think it's a good program to pick up and it's what I, I find as low bearing fruit. It's something that can be done quick and it's somewhat, it's not very expensive as well. That's all I have for everyone, but thank you.
All right, thank you. For the public to know, the safe parking program in Morgan Hill is eight vehicles and up to 14 people. So just to be clear, when 58% sounds like a big number, but it's, it's, it's eight vehicles, 14 people. All right, next speaker.
Yes, the next speaker is Gretchen Yoder Schrock. I am hitting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Gretchen.
Thank you very much. Hello, Mayor Blankley and council members. I just wanted to thank you for your time for looking into this important issue and for researching it and for looking out for our fellow people out there. I'm really excited to see things on there like the safe parking and the adoption of the destination homes plan to end homelessness. Thank you so much for that. I, I support this idea of, well, I would not support the idea of increasing the role and responsibility of police in our community. I, I agree that some other experts needs to be helping out the people living in this, in our, in our communities. And I also support the big picture that Councilmember Armendaris is exploring, you know, these policies. I know it's a lot to add on to the wonderful list that you've created, but I think things like thinking about zoning for tiny homes and the just cause evictions is something worthwhile for looking into. So thank you very much.
Thanks Gretchen. She was in my little sister's class. Okay, next speaker.
The next speaker is Jen Guppy. Jen, I am hitting allowed to talk now. Um, okay, just one moment. Jen, I have promoted you. You may unmute yourself.
Thank you. I'll stop my video because my, my audio often gets wonky if the video is on. Thank you so much for your work. From, I am not an expert, I just am an interested person and I, from what I read, many times when people become housed, their addiction problems get much better. Because being homeless exacerbates addiction. And I wanted to say that let's see, oh, the, a kinder, a gentler way of referring to homeless people is unhoused. And also, I wanted to say that I do not agree with having uniformed police officer in the area. I lived in downtown San Jose for many years and it was obvious to me that most of the unhoused people that are there are people of color who may have had unpleasant experiences with uniformed police officers. And so to help people that are in the homeless encampments here, I feel it would be much better to have a, not an un-uniformed person in that role. And also, I wanted to point out to you yesterday in the San Jose Mercury, in the local section, there is an, an article entitled, "Handling Homeless Encampments Are Costly." And it goes into the cost of probably what Gilroy is experiencing now, all the, the police calls, the and other efforts that are made to quote unquote, handle these encampments, including cleanup. And so right now, I believe it is costing Gilroy, it is costing many cities money just to handle the homeless encampments that are out there. I applaud your efforts. I applaud your heart in
Few minutes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, the next speaker is going to be Rebecca Garcia. Rebecca, I'm getting allowed to talk now. You may unmute yourself, Rebecca.
Good evening, council. Rebecca Garcia here. Thank you very much for all of your work and your efforts on. I think all of the ideas mentioned are worthy of certainly exploring. I echo everybody's who already mentioned that a police officer should certainly be more of a community officer, resource oriented, some mental health background. And I want to reemphasize that a connection and a partnership with the county's Office of Supportive Housing is really important. We don't have to have the conversation tonight, but at some point we'll have to decide what general fund or housing fund can be committed to these types of programs and services. No city ever solved homelessness without putting some dollars towards it. So as much as we want to rely on outside funding sources, we will have to have that difficult conversation one day. So I would just encourage us to keep that in mind later down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, can you tell how many more are in the queue?
Right now, we have two more. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand now or press star nine.
Okay, I'm going to continue with two minutes then and then we'll see.
It looks like we still only, we have one more that's raised their hand. So the next speaker is Adriana Leongard. I'm going to hit allowed to talk. Adriana, you may unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Adriana Leongard and thank you for having us for this topic. And I would like to, I live on Laurel Street and would like to talk regarding to some problems that we are facing down here. So first of all, I'm really in favor of having some PD person that is trained and he can see any dangerous situation, like not only for the homeless, but for us. And they can address it right away. If they see any guns, they, if they see any, any kind of other suspicious materials like bomb, they can, you know, they can identify it and they can take action for their protection and for us. They don't need to be fully uniform. I recommend a couple of them just for safety. The other one is, on this area here, they include, inclusive a couple business, local business owners here that they live on this street. And they, regarding to Bay yard, it's a mess. Like they don't, it's like, it's fire hazard. The, the police, the code enforcement has to come to their house like every few months to tell them to cut the weeds because, because of the fires. And we are talking about local business owners that lives on Laurel and they are well known in the city. So that's just example and they are all the residents too. It's, it looked like a war zone, they're going to find excuse for it, but there is no excuse. The other one is, the homeless needs to be removed ASAP from the, from the levy area. Not only they are polluting and they also, it's like, we are living like in a big, it's a big fire hazard. The, the city officials came so many times here last year because from fires that the homeless, they started, from cooking, from burning drugs, from whatever that is. For their safety and my, our safety.
Caller, that's, it's two minutes. Can you wrap up?
And also the safety park, because during the night, there is a, some cars that parks over here on the back on the Uves Park Drive to sell drugs. So, and you know, we have called and say they shouldn't be allowed here because the, the, the preserve is supposed to be closed during the night. You cannot even walk there safely, so they shouldn't be here.
Okay, caller, thank you. Thank you for the information. Next speaker.
The next speaker will be Vanessa Ashford. Vanessa, I'm hitting allowed to talk now. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, Vanessa, you're the last one at two minutes and I'm going to go down to one. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank the ad hoc committee and you, Mayor Blankley. I've actually had the opportunity to have some good conversations. And seeing what you guys have been working on is very optimistic. Just a couple points that were talked on tonight, drug treatment resources and the necessity of them. We definitely do need more treatment. Currently, the county has an assessment intake process. I have advocated with people trying to access that treatment option. And it's a national standard of, do you need inpatient or do you not need inpatient? The majority of people do not require medically inpatient. What they require is a safe house or room to detox and maintain early sobriety and attend outpatient. Secondly, speaking to what Dion spoke about, about rape, it absolutely does happen. And one of the most difficult services and difficult situations that I, as an outreach advocate, encounter is that our domestic violence survivors and rape survivors do not have access to treatment, support or services. Especially because the bulk of them are virtual. So to connect them with mental health, trauma treatment, any of those things, they need a safe, stable home to be in, even if it's a tiny home. On the topic of officers, I definitely suggest that we need more of a community service officer with a social worker background. A lot of what we experience out in the camps and the, the challenges people face don't have to do with law enforcement. Crime does happen, of course, and we need to reach out to our trained, sworn officers then. But what we need a lot more of is housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Suzanne, how many others do you have?
We have one more with the phone number ending in 2766. Phone number 2766, I am hitting allowed. We had one more that just came open.
Okay, so we're going to do, we're going to go to one minute each, everybody, so that we can, we can discuss this topic.
Great. Phone number 2766, you may unmute yourself. 2766, are you there?
Okay, how about go to the next speaker?
Uh, yes, I will do that. The next speaker is going to be Diana Hauri. I'm hitting allowed to talk now. Diana, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Diana Hauri. I definitely on that list. I feel like housing needs to be addressed, putting in some policies to really protect those individuals that, you know, need some housing or even preventing people to be homeless because some of them are on the verge. And so bringing in different alternatives and different options. I think, you know, I recite here, I pay, you know, my taxes and I would not mind my taxes being utilized to serve others and to be able to help those that are in need. And, you know, luckily, I mean, but I have a house. I would like for that to be the same for others that are in the brain. And, you know, luckily I need, but I have a house. I would like for that to be the same for others that are in the bring. You know, we also need to understand the complexities of why, you know, they're, they're there and it's important to really be at their level and really have an understanding in terms of, uh, all the barriers that they've had, you know, to undergo to be there. Some of them don't choose to be that, but then the cost of living here in, in, in the Bay Area is ridiculous. And so I think the city needs to do a little bit more in terms of putting in, in place some preventative measures.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Uh, there is just the last speaker. That is the phone number ending in two seven six six. Phone number two seven six six, I'm hitting allow to talk now. You may unmute yourself. There we go. Uh, two seven six.
Hi, my name is Frederick Hogan. I'm just calling. I'm a taxpayer in Gilroy. I am also, uh, work outreach with the Unhome here in Gilroy. I've had a lot of bullying. I've had a lot of pushback from people that do not like the unhomed. I appreciate this is a complex problem and I understand the city of Gilroy puts a lot of money behind this and I appreciate every dollar that goes to solving this crisis. But I do have to ask the council, if you're going to continue to spend taxpayers' money, you need better oversight as to how the money is being spent and if it is in fact being used to, um, its full ability. Cause right now I'm aware of the, our local, um, center. There's nothing written, everything seems to be, um, you know, verbal. And, uh, the Morgan Hill Safe Parking Program is not being run that well. There are six empty units and they've been empty for a long time. And when I brought people, including council member Armazares was there, um, to a meeting, um, they weren't getting any services up there. And I brought light to it and I was asked to never return, um, to the safe parking regardless of the people crying and asking me to stay because I really helped a lot and I replaced a lot of stuff and I did a lot of good, but because I shed light on the local center not doing what they needed to do to service those people and there's still six units empty, still empty units during a pandemic that we, the taxpayers, are paying for. Okay, I understand that a lot of other money goes into this, but six families could be off the street. You need to lower the barriers to get some safe.
It's been, I let it go to two minutes and that is a program that is happening in Morgan Hill. That's not our jurisdiction here, but thank you. We will consider that for the one that we hope to have in Gilroy.
Yes, but it is run at our local center. Gilroy people are placed there. You can ask council member Armadara.
Okay, thank you. All right, so back to council. Is there any more discussion at, on council before we can, uh, go forward, uh, move off this agenda item, two hours on it?
I would say we move forward on all the suggestions, recommendations and everything that was approved.
Okay.
We got our direction.
Yeah, no, I think this was great discussion, very warranted, all the public comment, everything that came in. I do want to let the council know that I was informed last week by a board member of the Compassion Center that they're considering a relocation within Gilroy as they approach the expiration of their current lease. And I wanted this council to be, to be aware of that and that while their landlord is willing to work with them, I spoke to him myself, how those negotiations transpire, transpires, of course, up to the parties. So something to be aware of, like the very first caller, you know, came in and another one, it, it's the criminal element that, that exists within the unhoused that people take issue with. It is not that people don't like the unhoused, or at least I, I, I would think the majority of people are, are willing to help. But the criminal element is something that nobody should have to live with. So that's what we're trying to get at, that the people that refuse help, don't want help or have a criminal element to it is, is where, you know, where you're gonna have friction and rightfully so, rightfully so. Okay, great. Oh, I see a hand. Rebecca, do you have something, uh, departing comment?
Um, actually I'm unclear on where we stand with the, um, two things that I, um, suggested or three in terms of, uh, family related services, um, looking at zoning overlays or zoning changes uh, to allow for tiny homes and also, um, policies that help prevent homelessness.
Right, I did not see around where we, yeah. I didn't see a majority wanting to add those to the list. Was I incorrect? No, so that's where we stand on that. It would be nice to know where, uh, where are we going from here, ad hoc committee? Is this something now you have what you need, so you'll let us know as you have progress that is worth reporting? Is that how we're leaving it?
Yes, and, um, I like the suggestion that Jan brought up. It'll, uh, we, we, we can talk about it on Thursday about having our minutes and agenda publicized. I think that would be excellent because I, Maria took excellent minutes. And I think the public would be very surprised and shocked by how detailed in all the work that we have done and studied, so.
Great.
So yes, I, I have no objection to that.
Well, thank you. Super, super thank you to all of you who have really done so much and continue to do so much. Okay, um, on, next on the agendas, council member reports. Council member Braco.
Uh, one thing, um, our library today opened back up, uh, for browsing and, and stuff. They're open Monday through Saturday, one to six PM. So come on down and enjoy the library.
Okay, council member Armendaris.
Um, I just want to recognize this is, uh, Sexual Assault Awareness Month and so, um, we have nonprofits like Community Solutions, um, that have, um, programs running for folks in our community on awareness and also intervention. So I just wanted to highlight that for those folks in our community.
All right, council member Marks.
I just have an announcement to welcome two new businesses to downtown. Rosie's Posies, which is located next to Cottage Floors. Uh, Caldwell's opened up and then we have Michelle's Vintage Clothing, which is on the corner of Third and Monterey. Besides clothing, they also sell stuffed animals. So welcome to Gilroy, the three of them, and that's it.
Thank you. Council member Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. Um, so from the Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center, the board approved the 2021 Visit Gilroy Strategic Marketing Plan. With the announcement of government, Governor Newsom's plan to reopen the state for business on June 15th, Visit Gilroy is launching several campaigns, including a co-op advertising plan with Expedia and Visit California starting on May 1st. The goal of this campaign is to drive overnight stays. Visit Gilroy is also participating in a co-op marketing campaign with 11 CCTC partners in a print and digital media campaign in June. This campaign will be featured in a Visit Gilroy, Visit California 2021 Roadmaps Magazine and will focus on drive, and on the drive market in the state. The Visit Gilroy Board of Directors also discussed the two proposals received by the city of Gilroy for the 536 project on Hacker Pass Highway. Following a discussion and report from Visit Gilroy Executive Director Jane Howard, board members voted to support the selection of select contracts as the company to recommend to move forward with an exclusive negotiating agreement with, with the city of Gilroy during which time details of the specific proposal would be studied and negotiated to determine if a plan or project is suitable for moving forward. From the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the new fifteen, new fifteen year solar plus battery storage contract with San Luis West Solar, located in Fresno County, California, the San Luis West Solar Project will provide 62 megawatts of solar generating capacity and a 15 megawatt of battery storage for a four hour discharge duration. This project puts more renewable energy on the California grid and the ability to discharge battery energy during peak hours will contribute to a more reliable and resilient grid. Delivery will begin on December 2023 and makes up approximately 4% of Silicon Valley Clean Energy's load in 2024. This is the 10th long-term renewable project that Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board has approved since 2018. The new project helps SVC continue to meet state's renewable procurement, mandates the state's goals to increase grid reliability and flexibility. Thank you.
All right, council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, um, I actually want to, uh, acknowledge, uh, one of our city staff members, Mr. Dennis Castro, believes, uh, code enforcement. It was, it was brought to my attention that he's been working very closely with our new businesses coming into town, Garden City Liquor and, um, and they had nothing but great things to say about our city staff and especially Mr. Castro. So I want to acknowledge him for working very closely with businesses and doing everything that you can to get them up and ready. So much appreciated. Uh, just a pity back on council member Marks', uh, remarks earlier, I, again, I want to encourage all city residents, um, to visit our local shops or restaurants. They are open and desperate for your visits and, their establishments and shop in their establishments. So I know many of our, many of my fellow council members have been out there, um, supporting our local businesses, so thank you. But I also want to encourage, um, city residents out there and support, um, and support these individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member La Romanos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Santa Clara Valley Water District met last Wednesday. As everyone knows, I represent Gilroy on the District Commission. One of the issues we discussed was reviewing and providing comment to the board on the next year's fiscal, uh, proposed groundwater production charges. Um, I provided my testimony that Gilroy and South County continue to pay the lowest water rates, given our rates of water usage, the source of our water, uh, the importance of agriculture and our lower income rates, uh, here in the southern part of the county. Um, so those, uh, items were raised by me and then also Supervisor Mike Wasserman echoed a, a similar thought as well. Uh, please note that this was just a recommendation to the Water District Board. Uh, we advise, but they ultimately decide on those rates. Uh, those rates will be, uh, decided upon in the next coming, uh, weeks. I'll get the date on that future meeting and I'll advise when a decision is made. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, in my report, I want to say that, uh, shortly after we just had our study session, letting everybody know the status of, of, uh, rents with city-owned properties. You know, one that was, uh, in arrears quite a bit, a business that was hardest hit, like everyone made a very big payment and is, uh, seriously catching up. So it's, it's all getting better. It's all getting better. For VTA, um, I want people to know that Assembly Member Mark Berman is proposing a change in VTA governance. We'll see where that goes. It's just something he's starting to put out there. And lastly, I, I need to address, this is a, a two-minute address, but as mayor, I'm tasked to preside over council meetings in accordance with both legal requirements and this council's meeting guidelines that we adopted on February 7th of this year. Two of our adopted guidelines, one, that the focal point of council member reports be on updates from council members as appointed representatives of this council and the other, that individual council members refrain from implying the position of the city or the council when speaking for themselves were compromised at our last meeting. My, my report therefore now addresses these issues. Every council meeting allows for members of the public to speak to the council on any subject over which Gilroy has jurisdiction, Gilroy City Council. It is not incumbent upon any council member during their report to solicit public comment from particular speakers when all may speak and doing so suggests a bias from the deus of this council. Each council member has a sworn duty to the collective interest of Gilroy as a whole to consider public comments without bias towards specific interests and to be particularly aware that policy is benefiting some, harm others. My efforts to run council meetings as efficiently as I can are because we, the city council, answer to you for our progress on policies that promote a better quality of life for all of us, the collective us. Your participation through public comment helps us form those policies. In the end, policy comes down to how we allocate resources, knowing that every dollar here is at the expense of a dollar there. A prime example is the condition of necessary funding for, necessary funding for our streets, the maintenance of which is an essential city service and yet the necessary funding for which has been diverted for years in favor of something else. I ask the public to recognize these trade-offs and to be mindful of the, how the actions of each council member you elect influence those trade-offs. As you watch me try to move Gilroy forward at a pace more reflective of accomplishment, know that even when it slows or impedes an already notoriously slow government process, my duty as I provide, preside over council meetings is to foster transparency, awareness and responsibility in government without bias. Thank you for your understanding. With that, we move on to future council initiated items. Do we have any? Okay, is there any public comment, Suzanne? I don't have to ask public comment on this.
No.
Consent calendar. Are there any, uh, questions of council? If not, I will go to public comment. Okay, is there public comment on consent?
If you'd like to speak on the consent calendar, please press star nine now on your phone or raise your hand within the Zoom app. It looks like we have no public comment.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move Dion.
Okay, the motion by council member Braco, seconded by council member La Romanos to approve the consent calendar. Roll call.
Rebecca Armendaris. Yes. Dion Braco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Romanos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar. Marie Blankley.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Okay, item, seven A, bids and proposals. Approval of an agreement in the amount of $1,050,000 with House Keys Incorporated to administer the city's below market rate housing programs from May 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, with two one-year extensions possible. Staff report, Maria, uh, sorry, is it Maria?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sorry. Okay, Maria.
Okay, one moment, please. Okay, can you see my, uh, presentation, my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, good evening, everyone. Okay, my name is Maria De Leon, Program Administrator. Uh, city staff is requesting approval of an agreement in the amount of $1,050,000 to administer the city's below market rate housing program. Now, this agreement is from May 2021 to June 2024 with two one-year possible extensions after the third year. Other agencies used to administer the BMR programs for Gilroy, but due to our, uh, due to those agency closures, uh, these units were transferred to Gilroy. So on March 16th, 2017, the city entered into agreement with House Keys to administer Gilroy's BMR portfolio until June 2020 with an extension to April 30th, 2021. Now, due to the specialized skills needed to facilitate this program and the reduction in housing staff, it was important that city staff partner with the reputable agency that was an industry expert to administer Gilroy's BMR program. Also, House Keys, Inc. committed to working closely with city staff to ensure the effectiveness of the program. To date, Gilroy's BMR portfolio includes 1,062 rentals and 290 homeownership units, many of which include various deferred loans applied on the rent, on the property owners for programs such as, uh, down payment assistance. So on, on February 5th, 2021, the city of Gilroy issued a request for proposal seeking consultants for the oversight, administration and facilitation of Gilroy's BMR programs. So the RFE, which, RFP was issued to administer all three BMR components, which include homeownership, rentals and loans. The RFP was published in various media outlets and mailed directly to prospective consultants, specifically House Keys Incorporated, Alta Housing, Hello Housing and Housing Trust Silicon Valley Incorporated. House Keys Incorporated was the only proposal submitted and it included full administration of all of the three BMR components. So as you may recall, last year, the city of Gilroy went through restructuring due to the negative impacts of COVID-19 had on the city's revenues and general fund. So as a result, several housing-related programs were shifted, uh, from the Community Development Department to the oversight of the city administrator. The program administrator, which is me, um, absorbed the facilitation of CDBG, Housing Trust Fund and BMR-related programs. Given the highly specialized nature of the BMR programs, staff determined that these programs staff determined that these programs would best be served by a professional organization with the knowledge, expertise, resources and staffing to successfully manage the program. So many municipalities are taking a similar position like Gilroy and have elected for House Keys to administer their BMR programs. So examples of these cities include Morgan Hill, Santa Clara, Scotts Valley, Los Gatos, San Ramon, Burlingame and Menlo Park. So the House Keys scope of work is the administration of all three BMR components, which includes, like I mentioned before, homeownership, rentals and loans. So previously, House Keys used to only administer homeownership units. So with the approval of this agreement, House Keys will now be able be conducting proper documentation when recording BMR property transactions, holding orientations and workshops for residents, developing and consistently updating program guidelines and materials, maintaining affordability program website and the link to the housing agency's website, providing quarterly program and summary reports, which includes performance matrices, maintaining the agency's existing records and files through a database, acting as a transaction coordinator for all real estate transactions, conducting marketing and outreach efforts and annual compliance monitoring of the BMR portfolio. So one of the important components of this proposal again is the monitoring and compliance of activities. So this effort ensures that those who are listed in the apartment rental agreements or the house document or deeds are actually the ones living in the residence. So it confirms that the unit is not being rented out or subleased to another family while the family listed on the deed has moved on or purchased another home. City staff is not equipped to conduct such compliance and monitoring of this rental and homeownership of units. So compliance is necessary to ensure continued affordability and that the end of the units and integrity of the BMR portfolio for the city and the residents that this program is intended to support. After interviewing the House Keys representative and scoring their proposal, city staff has determined that House Keys Incorporated is qualified to conduct the services listed in the RFP. A notice of intent to award was issued on March 22nd, 2021 to submit an agreement for the city council approval today, April 19th. So this five-year contract will begin in May 2021 to June 2026 for a contract total of $1,050,000. So the table in front of you shows a breakdown of the payments per year. So in the initial three years, the payout would be $695,000. So this is necessary as this includes a one-time fee of $30,000 for onboarding of the rental program. And in the first three years, House Keys will also update and clean up the records to reflect the current status of all units and develop the program structure and marketing materials. So a lot of work gets done the first three years. And on the third year, staff will evaluate the effectiveness and success of its partnership and can decide to either extend the contract for one or two more years. So approval of this contract will not impact the general fund. The primary source of revenue for this contract is a housing trust fund. So the financial assets and revenue flow of the housing trust funds are sufficient to support the House Keys contract. So also, an additional 5% of Cal Home and 5% of Begin Programs funds will be utilized to subsidize this contract. So under these program agreements, funds can be used towards cost of loan servicing and collection, which is an element of the House Keys contract. So again, year three, staff can evaluate the House Keys contract and the housing trust fund balances and return to city council with a strategy for continuance. So in conclusion, affordable housing and homeless preventions are issues that council is currently facing. So approval of this contract constitutes an investment into the management of the city's BMR programs. And having an industry expert with extensive experiences, knowledge, resources, partnerships and sufficient staff will result in a strong and solid BMR portfolio that can effectively serve Gilroy's families most in need. After approval, staff will execute an agreement to begin work next month, in May 1, 2021. So this concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have present our Community Development Director Karen Garner and our analyst Robert Carrera, who put together RFP. And we also have the House Keys representative present in case you want more detailed information.
Thank you, Maria. All right, council. I'll go to you with questions. If you don't need to share your screen, then I can see everybody, but I don't know if council members are going to ask you then to go back and share your screen. So council members, I see Rebecca Armendaras has a hand raised. That's all I see right now. So council member?
Sure. Thank you, Maria and staff, for your hard work on this. I'm wondering, do we dictate like how many informational meetings and workshops need to be held per year? And if so, will that be in the, will that be in the MOU?
Yeah, so I requested quarterly updates, meetings with them. We felt that meeting every month would be too much, but in every quarter would be sufficient to track and monitor the progress and the units that they oversee.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mary Blankley. And Maria, would that report also be able to get filtered back to the council? Those workshops are, I think would be highly educational for our council to understand a little bit more about what a below-market rate unit is and affordable housing and how the program is doing. I know I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so you're requesting periodic updates on the progress of the program?
Yeah, I just, I mean, whether it gets filtered into like a, you know, a special meeting or a study session or whatnot, I think it'd just be a good ongoing education for us in the public.
Any other council members with questions? All right, I can't see the rest of you, so I'm going to go to Suzanne and ask for public comment.
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand within the Zoom application. It appears we have no public comment at this time.
Okay, then back to council, we have, it's an actual action item, right? Approving the budget amendment in the amount of $70,000. Is that what we're needing to vote on? Yes. Okay, to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $70,000 in the Housing Trust Fund for fiscal year 2021 services of this agreement. Is there a motion for that?
Yes, ma'am. I would make that motion. I believe that this is a good opportunity for us to work with an experienced group that can help us administer the program. And it really is something that's part of that larger approach to addressing affordable housing more broadly. So yeah, I would make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay. Maria, can we remove the screen sharing?
Yes, ma'am. And it also requires an improvement of the agreement for House Keys.
Yeah, that's the second one. Let me, oh, am I supposed to, is that all in the same motion? Suzanne, I'd like to do A and B separately.
A and B separately.
Okay, so A is what I'm on.
Two separate motions is preferred.
Right, okay. So we just did A and the motion was by Councilmember LaRoma Yost and it was seconded by Councilmember Tovar, so we need a roll call vote.
Yes, Rebecca Armendaras.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yost.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar. Marie Blankley.
Yes. Okay, and then item B is approve an agreement in the amount of $1,050,000 with House Keys, Inc. to administer the below-market rate housing programs from May 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, with two one-year extensions possible and authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement and related documents.
I would move that.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Hilton, roll call vote.
Rebecca Armendaras.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRoma Yost.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes. All right, item B, award a contract in an amount of up to $143,467.42 to Access Communications Incorporated for the City Council Chambers Audio-Visual Modernization Project. Leanne.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. That's a mouthful of a title, I know. The audiovisual equipment in the council chambers has been in dire need of an upgrade for the last several years. This is something we've looked at a couple of times. Due to changes in technology as well as broken and/or damaged equipment, some improvements are needed. Given that the city staff will need to have the technology capability to run hybrid meetings when we reopen to the public, that we're going to need to have equipment available so that we can accommodate people who are present in person as well as people who are participating virtually. So getting these improvements in place sooner rather than later is really important. A request for proposal process was completed for the audiovisual modernization of the council chambers. We got two proposals back in response to the RFP. Staff evaluated both of the proposals and determined that access communications proposal best met the needs of the project and was also the most competitive from a cost standpoint as well. So the staff report contains a list of things that this project will include. I'll walk through that. And then if there are any particular questions or highly technical questions, I have Scott Golden, our IT manager, available for questions as well. So the upgrades that are planned for this project, both equipment and installation are included in this list. So we're going to be upgrading current camera system infrastructure to improve our filming capability and the quality of the streaming that's available to the public. We're going to be improving the display system in the council chambers by replacing the current projector and screen with a new laser projector. And then we'll have two screens to allow for viewing of all areas of the council chambers. As you know, from the past, if you sit on the far left side, if you're facing the dais, when you are in the chambers, you can't see the screen that's up on the wall because it's angled and facing the other way. And so we will have a second screen on the wall, kind of over by the flags closer to the windows on the east side of the room to ensure that those sitting over on that side will have the visual that they need to follow along with any presentation that may be up on the screen. So that will be important. We'll be installing new digital matrix that will feature support for the required inputs and outputs because the current analog system that we have right now is very outdated and is no longer supported and needs to be replaced. We have several improvements to the audio system. I won't list all those in details, but they're in the staff report and it will improve the audio. We have some ADA compliance, Americans with Disability Act compliance that we need to meet. And so these improvements will allow us to have a RF-based assisted listening system with wireless receivers and a charging station to assist those who may request this additional service. Three touch panels will be added to allow staff better control of the system during the live meeting. We will have displays at each of the nine seats at the dais. And this will allow for easy viewing of materials and presentations during the meeting. I've been watching for the last 20 years, council members get strain in their neck from how they have to crank and turn and shift their chair in order to see the screen that is up presenting. Dion, I don't know how he's ever, you know, really followed along with any staff report that we've put up on the screen because he's been in that end chair for as long as I can remember. So the screen at each of your seats will view the materials that are up on the screen so that you can look just right there in front of you and not have to move your chair or crank your neck around. And then we will also be adding a remote conferencing option, which will be added to the system to allow for the hybrid meetings using Zoom or other similar platform. The cost for this improvement project, both the equipment and the installation, is up to $143,467.42. And this includes a 5% contingency that will only be used if absolutely needed. And there are currently sufficient funds in the fiscal year 21 Information Technology Budget to cover the cost of this project. So following council approval, we'll finalize the agreement and schedule the equipment purchases and installation. We expect the configuration to begin in May with a target overall project completion date by the end of July. So at this time, staff is recommending that you award a contract in the amount of up to $143,467.42 to Access Communications, Inc. for the City Council Chambers Audio-Visual Modernization Project and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and related documents. And we're happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Okay, council members, please raise your hand if you have any questions of Leanne. Councilmember Armendaras?
I might have missed it, Leanne, but will there be capability for translation?
I don't believe that technology is within the audiovisual aspects of the system upgrades that we have included here. Scott, can you confirm that? I don't believe I read that in any of the materials at this time.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. This is a purely a technical modernization of the council chambers. Translation, which is typically handled through a service. Usually, what I've seen in other agencies, the agency I was at previously, is that there is somebody who is taking the feed and then translating it and doing it through a headphone type setup or other means. This is not specifically addressing that piece, though there is a radio frequency component of this to allow for. Get the specific details of that, but I think. Basically expanded. Sorry, Jimmy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think what you're asking for is something we are going to look into as we've done it with, you know, the recreation program, getting that translated, having meetings in Spanish. So I think it's just an overall thing we will be looking into, especially when we're able to return.
Okay, and the reason I ask is I know sometimes it requires hardware versus a translation service. There's headphones or transmitters, things like that.
I think this infrastructure will better position us to be able to add features like that in the future. So we'll look into that and see how we can add that to the complement in the council chambers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Leanne, thank you for this report. In regards to the company that was selected, and I'm glad to see that they're somewhat local. They're our neighbors to the north of us, San Jose. But in regards to the RFP, it's mentioned that two companies sort of applied. Can you tell me a little bit about the second company, where they're located and what sort of favored one over the other? Was it just the price itself?
I think it was both meeting our overall objective for the project as well as price. Scott, would you want to speak to the location of the other company?
They were another Bay Area company. I also wanted to mention, so Access Communications, they've also partnered with a company that is based here in Gilroy to do some of the installation services as well. So it's a joint project and there is a Gilroy company that's participating.
So the other company to confirm is not a Gilroy company?
No.
Right.
The one that was not selected.
Yeah, as you know, that's what I was aiming for, so I appreciate that. I think, again, unless I didn't read it in the report, we forward when we list companies that have applied for RFPs and we can list those companies on the report so we know exactly, you know, who's applying, if possible. Thank you.
Okay, I will go to public comment. Suzanne, do we have any public comments?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand via the Zoom application. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, then that's back to council and looking for a motion if anybody's ready.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hilton, seconded by Councilmember Tovar to award a contract in an amount of up to $143,467.42 to Access Communications, Inc. for the City Council Chambers Audio-Visual Modernization Project and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and related documents. Roll call.
Rebecca Armendaras.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRomaineos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Marie Blankley.
Yes, all right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Public hearing, yes, public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business. Approval of the Eagleberry and Seventh Street parking lot. Alternative, well, alternative two is what it says. So Gary Heap, Gary giving us the staff report?
I am indeed. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Let me see here. Right you there. You see that? Okay.
Yes.
I can't put that in presentation mode for you. All right, here we go. Very excited this evening to share with you some alternatives for our seventh and Eagleberry parking lot. So the purpose of this meeting is is has a number of purposes. First off, it's transparency. The council was a very generous with generous and provided Public Works one point five million dollars to build a parking lot at the intersection of Seventh and Eagleberry. We wanted to be transparent how much the project would cost, what components went into that project. So we're tonight, we're presenting the parking lot layouts that have been developed by our our consultant BKF. The parking lot costs in the individual cost of some of those components. We've separated into basic needs for parking lot and then amenities. And then we wanted to discuss some funding alternatives for council. So as you know, this in a project is at the intersection of Seventh and Eagleberry. You see it on the right side there. It encompasses a vacant lot adjacent to or to the west of the Gilroy Center for the Arts as well as the current demonstration garden, which would be removed as part of the project. Here's an image from that intersection. Looking to the north, you see the demonstration garden in the distance, the center for the arts there on the right, the yellow building. Here's a view of gourmet alley looking north. You see the site to the left. This is from the demonstration garden along Eagleberry looking south. You see the existing landscaping from the demonstration garden there on the left as well as the existing landscaping there within the parking parking lane or excuse me, the landscape strip along Eagleberry there. So looking back at some history on this site, the the GDBA Gilroy Downtown Business Association back in two thousand nineteen did a parking assessment. And and they got a lot of really good anecdotal information from a lot of the businesses in the downtown. And what they determined was and what they presented to council was that there's a need for a downtown parking lot based on parking shortage. This proposed parking lot, which again, the council provided funding for, will enhance the downtown economic development by providing parking for those that are coming to shop in the downtown area. It supports the general plan, the council strategic plan goals and the GDBA gourmet alley plan as compared to depending on which component you look at it, but primarily is to provide a parking lot in this area to support the downtown. Again, the city generously provided one point five million for this project. We hired BKF as the design engineer. We're in currently in the design phase and have developed three alternatives, including a pedestrian plaza, which we'll share with you in a minute. You should know that when we provided the scope to BKF, we let them know that, you know, this is a very generous amount of money from our council. So we wanted to make sure and provide a parking lot that really provided a downtown amenity and provided a cornerstone for economic development in the downtown. So based on that, we asked them to provide a very, you know, well amenity parking lot, not just asphalt with, you know, some stripes on it. So this is a very nice downtown parking lot that we hope to have in the downtown for for several years, and I'll be sharing that with you this evening. So because of funding issues, we're forced to have to really present this project in terms of required features. And then later on, we'll talk about some of the amenities or some of the niceties we could add to the parking lot to again, bring it up to that standard that we so so deserve downtown. In basic, it needs to provide parking, standard parking stalls, cleaner vehicle parking stalls, electric vehicle parking stalls, which I think is 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 a great thing to have. ADA compliant parking stalls. And then we provided some motorcycle parking stalls as well. It does require mandatory onsite stormwater treatment and lighting. Now, we're providing recommending providing two types of lighting, typical parking lot lighting and pedestrian scale lighting. Typical parking lot lighting, as you see here in this diagram or image here to the left is is typically downward facing. It's not super fancy. It's not super beautiful. It's cost effective. And it provides with an LED light, a nice bright area for a safe parking lot so that it can be used at night. Pedestrian scale lighting you see on the right there, and and this is the the parking lot just by the library is is post top. And unfortunately, it provides a little bit of a spread of light. It's not downward facing. And so with the fact that we've got residents across Eagleberry, we're proposing to use this downward facing light in the parking lot. And I'll talk about the use of the pedestrian scale light when we get to the layouts here. The additional amenities we'll talk, be talking about this evening include the construction of a concrete walkway between gourmet alley and the parking lot through gourmet alley to Monterey. And it's going to be right now, there's a dirt lot or excuse me, a dirt pathway just north of the Gilroy Center for the Arts. And so this is a proposal here is to reconstruct that in concrete to provide an all weather service surface for folks to walk back and forth between Monterey and the parking lot. Provide electrical vehicle charging stations at a minimum. We're wanting to provide the conduit to the charging stations, but we'll be looking to potentially look for bonding for those electrical vehicle charging stations, or at least seeing it as an amenity and not a requirement. Parking lot landscaping, though this is really critical, we feel it's not a absolute requirement. Either is the parking lot landscaping along the outside of it. It's, it doesn't fit the absolute need for a parking lot. Or the pedestrians seating area, which includes a seating, some seating informational kiosk, trash receptacles and some entrance portal structures. And I'll show you those in a minute. Bicycle amenities are also something that could be identified as a cost savings alternative. Either bike racks or lockers. And there's also been a layout for a pedestrian plaza adjacent to the Gilroy Arts Center that I'll show you here as well. So we have a couple layouts. This is the first one we'd like to share with you this evening. This is what we're calling alternative one. This provides one hundred and thirty two parking spaces. You see here along the eastern side, the electric or the the clean air vehicle stage spaces, the ADA spaces here, and then the EV charging spaces here. This parking lot configuration is different from the other in that it has a parking lot driveway located in the center area here along Eagleberry. Both of the alternatives have a driveway here approximately this location over on Seventh. You see the seating area that I was mentioning before, you know, if somebody's parking their car and wants to wait before they walk into downtown, they can take a little bit of a seat here. Again, there's trash receptacles proposed. So this is a kind of a nice amenity that we're proposing. There's an entrance portal here like a wood trellis to identify the pedestrian entrances. Similarly, a pedestrian portal here that provides kind of a linear view, if you will, out all the way to Monterey through the pedestrian features of the lot itself. So this is the first of the alternatives that we were presenting this evening. And as you can see, again, here's the concrete walkway along this dirt current dirt path with the lighting that's shown. So we want to make sure like that just as well as the parking lot for safety reasons. One of the interesting things or neat things we're also doing is is based on this layout, we can also separate these this parking lot into half and half event space and parking. So for instance, we could put barricades along this section here and along this section here and open this up for a farmer's market or some kind of a downturn downtown event while still maintaining the parking in this side, which still has the required amount of ADA spaces for the amount of parking that's provided here. So this is nice amenity. Each of the two layouts we're going to present have the opportunity to have half that parking closed off for a a special event type of space here. And we are looking into also providing electrical outlets locked, electrical outlets at the base of each of these lights as well to provide lighting for any vendors that might use the site. The second parking lot layout includes one hundred and thirty seven parking spaces, so about five more than the previous one thirty two. As you can see, the driveway has now been moved over to this location here. We feel this is actually a better driveway location. It's further from the intersection here at Eagleberry and Seventh. And and if you were in a vehicle coming out at night with your headlights on this driveway location, the headlights would be shining right into the front of a house. The driveway location over here, the lights are more on onto the side of a house or are more in line with a driveway of a current residence across the way. So that's another benefit of of having the driveway in this location. In addition to obviously the five additional parking spaces, same amenities in terms of the the seating area, the walkway out to Monterey and all the variety of of parking lots, parking spaces along through here. Both of them have the also bike amenities in this location here you see. As well as landscaping along the front edge, because we saw what the landscaping looked like in that image before and landscaping along Seventh as well, while still providing visibility for police to get visibility through the parking lot again for safety and security reasons. So this is alternative two. In this case, you can go ahead and separate this off with some barricades along this driveway location here and along this entrance here. This again could be that event space fronting right onto the streets pedestrian accessible while maintaining again that vehicular parking zone up in this eastern portion of the parking lot. This is alternative three. We asked the designer to come up with a an alternative that provided a a an alternative to the stormwater treatment. You see the blue second section in the middle here. This blue area is the required mandatory stormwater treatment. So the parking lot itself will drain towards the center. And this is the area of the stormwater treatment. What we see here in alternative three, which again, in this location has the driveway here with one hundred and thirty seven spaces is permeable pavement. Permeable pavement here would allow the storm water to also permeate into that into those spaces there, which would allow us to reduce the amount of stormwater treatment in the middle. But when we end up looking at it, it really isn't cost effective. The the cost of the permeable pavers is, you know, in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar extra range. And so it just isn't cost effective. So I don't believe I would recommend moving forward with this alternative. Looking at then the plaza. And this was an alternative that the that the designer came up with as well. This is the location here. Zooming in on that, we're looking at some amenities. We're looking at benches. We're looking at raised planters. We're looking at a kiosk here as opposed to here, kind of in a park area. We're looking at some specimen trees within the 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 demonstration garden we have right now. Or the community garden, I should say, there's, there's a field of of brick pavers. And those pavers were put there a number of years ago. I'm not exactly sure when, but they they have nice little sayings on them, you know, congratulations, Suzie, on your graduation or or various things like that in memory of so and so. So we could use those papers and relocate them into this plaza area here if we decide to move forward with this alternative. So now we look at the fun stuff, the the cost estimate. So we started with one point five million. With the, let's look at the bottom here first. The design and sequoia that we've were having BKF do for us is at two forty one. We we estimate the construction inspection, they'll have to hire a hire an inspector to manage this project with construction management support will be this amount. And then the permitting fees that were required are fifteen thousand. So we end up with a little over one point one million dollars remaining from the one point five that the council provided. You see alternative two here, which is the cheapest alternative. We're still at one point six million dollars. And so we see the 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 issue there. So where do we go from here? We'll look, continue to look at some value engineering to make sure that we're sharpening our pencils as best we can. We are continuing to look at more detailed cost estimates and refining those. We could look at reduced amenities. And when I get to that amenities list, we could decide to go ahead and bid some of those out as as bid alts and see what the prices come in at. Or we could look at a smaller lot to build right now with an opportu- opportunity to expand. But the feeling was that if we don't build this full lot right now, it's going to be really hard to come back at a later point and maybe build the the second half or the a third of it if we if we go with the two thirds option now. So I think we're really advocating for building the full lot in some manner now. The last thing we'd like to do is look at some alternative funds, and I I think we have an answer for you when we get to the end here. So the preliminary cost estimate for the required features, they're itemized here. So we can go into detail. This is provided in the staff report. Again, this just gets you to the numbers that we presented in the previous slide, the one point two, one point three million dollars for alternative two, which combines the striping and the vehicle charging stations, et cetera. If we were to stick with just the basics, as in the previous slide, this is what we would end up with, just a a nice paved surface with parking, but no landscaping, we'd end up with just maybe some mulch, no electrical vehicles, charging stations, but the conduits for those vehicle charging stations, no pedestrian or seating area here for pedestrians to wait while the other folks might be walking or parking their cars. And we would keep this in dirt. We would still provide the lighting because that's critical, but we this would remain in dirt, not concrete at this point. So if we were to go with just the minimums, this is what the parking lot would would end up. Now, if we're looking at some additional amenities, if we want to go through the menu, these are how much some of those other items cost. And again, we're we're staff will be ultimately recommending alternative two because the 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 least amount of cost and the most parking spaces. So we're looking at a cost of thirteen thousand for a raised crosswalk, which staff really doesn't think it needs at this point, but it's an alternative if council decides. The concrete walkway to Monterey is thirty six thousand, the electrical vehicle charging station, the parking strip landscaping on Eagleberry and Seventh, including irrigation, the parking lot landscaping, including the trees within the parking lot, including irrigation, those pedestrian amenities in that seating area, the bicycle amenities, including bike lockers. And then the the downtown association also asked that instead of using the down facing not as attractive lighting in the parking lot that the city consider using all pedestrian level lighting, all decorative lighting throughout both the parking lot and the walkway from from Monterey into gourmet alley. And that's an additional almost forty thousand dollars in cost there to go with all pedestrian level lighting. This is alternative to showing the required features with the additional amenities. And again, these have with those additional amenities, we've got the trash receptacles, the relocated donor pavers could be used in this area. If not in the plaza area, the kiosk, the bench and the seating, this would be the full built out as we presented prior. So we wanted to make sure and get input from the stakeholders and to be able to share that with you this evening. So we've had three stakeholder meetings over the last couple of months with the GDBA, the Chamber of Commerce and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. These, and this is the input we got from those groups. Both of the groups agreed that we should include lighting in those vehicle charging stations, but the GDBA and the Chamber of Commerce preferred alternative two and had some of these amenities and some of these requests here, including parking lot, the the landscaping, a farmer's market shed structure. And that was, I believe, included with the staff report, their letter, which showed what that image would look like. Relocation of the donor pavers, some additional signage to restrict overnight parking, which we will certainly be adding, elimination of the race crosswalk, et cetera. The BPAC, when we took it to them, they prefer alternative one. They would like to consider e-bike or e-scooter charging that we work with a vendor to split the revenue from an emergency, excuse me, EB charging station that we could provide additional fundraising for the project through selling of additional donor bricks. They prefer bike lockers over the bike racks simply because there's not really eyes on that parking lot per se. And they felt that it was really unsafe to have bike racks. They would prefer to have bike lockers. And I think I kind of support that. Include the raised crosswalk, concrete walkway to Monterey and then the the portal structure in the plaza. So in terms of staff, staff is recommending alternative two for the parking lot without the pedestrian plaza that's in the turf area just adjacent to the gourmet alley and the Center for the Arts. So we're not recommending that at this point because we just don't have the funding to unless this council would like us to go out with a big on that one. And again, why it provides the most parking spaces, lowest cost alternative, and again, supported by most stakeholders. So the estimated costs for the staff recommendation, including the minimum required identified items and the additional amenities means that we still need about three hundred and fifty thousand, excuse me, the additional amenities come to a total of three hundred and fifty thousand in addition to this amount here. Which means when adding those up, we find ourselves a little over a half a million dollars short of funding for this parking lot as recommended with the staff recommended amenities. So now we look at some alternatives for funding that shortfall. Through other projects recently, we've we've identified that there is currently two hundred and eight thousand dollars in fund four hundred capital projects that is unaccounted for. We've we've confirmed this with finance. And we'd like to take advantage and put that or utilize that two hundred and eight thousand dollars towards this parking lot shortfall. We also just recently received a Cal OES grant for the city held backup generator for the We also just recently received a Cal OES grant for the city held backup generator for the three hundred thousand dollars. Which does free up about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fund to six fifty one of the public facilities fund. So in adding the two oh eight and the two fifty, we now find ourselves just a little under fifty thousand dollars short. To build the full public amenities in the parking lot and really build a nice parking lot that this downtown deserves. So the next steps based on council directions, staff will pursue completion of the design of the parking lot. And commence also the, the architect and site review through the planning division because it does need an arc and site. And review by our CDD friends. So final design is scheduled for the summer, advertising of the bids for fall and winter with construction. Next summer. So that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions. We have Julie Oats, who is the project engineer. On with me tonight, although I promised I wouldn't ask her any questions outright or make her talk in public, but she is here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Gary. We've got a lot of hands raised. So I want to get to council member questions and I, I'm sorry if this is not the order in which they came up. But I'm saying council member Tovar, Armandaris, La Romanios, and then Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary. I have several questions and my thoughts, but I'm only going to ask a couple that others. Chime in in regards to the charging stations. Just look at, how many are we initially thinking about? Installing if we were to go with those.
Yes, the, the parking, let me see, I can pull that up here.
Yeah, while you did, the reason why I asked is I, I'm in favor of that because I think if you start. And you, you correct me if I'm wrong. If we have charging stations, obviously there's, there's a fee to use those charging stations. Is it the city reimbursed or city giving some of those funds for those charging stations?
Yeah, we're, we're still working, we would be working on the details of that. Certainly, we would be looking at. Some kind of alternative that did have that, that shared cost with a vendor. But we haven't, we haven't pursued that quite yet.
Okay.
Seven, seven EV charging stations, yes.
And that's why I asked, I mean, I, I, I think, I, I think it's a no brainer. I mean, for us to look into as many of those as possible if. If we're going to, you know, if, if there's funds going back to the city, why would we not want more of those charging stations? And obviously, those are the type of vehicles we want to come downtown. They'd always say that we don't have any charging stations. So. I would say we really look into more than just seven. You know, with, with, with cost. So that's question number one. And correct me if I'm wrong, and I know we had this discussion, a lengthy discussion regarding not only this parking lot, and I, I don't want to get. Too far out, but when we talked about lighting, obviously safety, you know, obviously that's an important element to this parking. Lot here, but I, I thought we also said that we would also made sure that the other city owned lots. That we were going to make sure that some of these funds and correct me if I'm wrong, that we were going to utilize some of these funds to make sure that we had safety lights and everything in these other. Parking lots as well. But this is telling me that most of not all the funds is going to just this one parking lot. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, right now we have all the funds that have been allocated for this project going to this one parking lot. And then we're still short, like I said, so. We have not considered the other parking lots in terms of lighting, but we could certainly look into that. But at this time, it's not included, but we could, we could, we could look into that.
No, and, and I think we should because again, if I'm in favor of, you know. It's doing as much as we can to track people down to downtown. And if it's, you know, going, you know, all the bells and whistles, whatever, I, I know there's additional costs. But if we're gonna ignore the other parking lots and they're never going to be used, we know currently they're not used much other than store. That was what I would recommend. So I have more, but I'll wait till the end.
Yeah, because we're, we're focusing on this particular lot right now. That's what's on this agenda and council budgeted one point five million. We can already see it's five hundred and seven thousand more than that with just what this is. So really to get into other parking lots is not what this particular agenda item is. Okay, council member Armandaris.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was noticing in these stakeholders meetings that the most important stakeholders, right? The folks who live in the area were not included at all, like there was no. Account, there was no town hall. What kind of effort was made, if any, to engage them or to ask them? You know, how they felt and what their preference would be. Because every time we have a festival, anytime we do anything to downtown, they're the ones who are impacted the most.
Absolutely. I believe when we, when we had this, we, we did not include those, those folks in our outreach. Unfortunately, we did though carry the questions out to the, the downtown business association. And as well as the Chamber of Commerce in the downtown, which really it was felt that they would be providing the most benefit because. You know, that is something that we're not building this parking lot for the residents necessarily. We're certainly wanting to get. The design done so it doesn't impact them, which is why we're, we're looking at some of the lighting alternatives, but. You, you're right. We did not look to the community for their input. We just went to the business association for their input.
Hey, council member La Romanios.
Thanks, Gary, for the report. You know, I, I, I look at a, a couple of these things in the amenities as, as being pretty, pretty essential with regard to things like the landscaping and. And the electric vehicle charging facilities, but I'll save those comments for later. I noticed in some of the recommendations from, from the chamber there that they had requested that the. Utilities in, in gourmet alley be undergrounded. Can you speak to, to that a little bit more? Is that something that's required for this project or? How, how did that come about as a, as a recommendation on their part?
Absolutely. And good question. Thank you for that. The. They provided the feedback there to really support their gourmet alley project. The downtown is, is very interested in, in enhancing gourmet alley, making it a pedestrian friendly environment. And they're looking to have the utilities undergrounded along gourmet alley. They felt since we were out there doing construction that this would be a great time to go ahead and include along that block face there or even within that entire block. To be able to provide that undergrounding with this construction. So that, that is why they have, they went ahead and recommended or requested it be added. Unfortunately, we don't have additional funding at this point and rule twenty A money at this point is not. Something we can use because it just doesn't qualify, it doesn't meet the criteria or thresholds. To be able to use the rule twenty A money out there as gourmet alley currently stands. And so that would have to be funded by the city for that undergrounding. So it's not recommended for inclusion at this point, just because we don't have the funding for it.
Totally understandable. Great. Thank you.
All right, council member Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blankley. Hey, Gary. First off, I just want to say, nice going on getting that grant. I don't know who in city staff did that, but three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Kudos. Good job. I think that should have been highlighted first and last. I'm just, I'm a little confused on the, staff supporting alternatives to, and you want a combination of the. Pedestrian lighting and standard lighting. I, I, I've lost you on that part.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't explain that. What we're recommending is to provide pedestrian scale lighting. To match, and the pedestrian scale lighting that we're, we're proposing to use is the pedestrian scale lighting or the post-op lighting that we have on Monterey right now. So we're proposing to carry that, that same lighting along the pedestrian walkway between Monterey and gourmet alley. But once you then cross the alley and get into the parking lot, we're recommending to use more of a parking lot friendly. Style and cheaper, frankly, cheaper lighting as well. I think that there's a forty, forty-five thousand dollar cost difference. If we were to use the more expensive pedestrian scale lighting in the parking lot as well as along that pathway. So. We're recommending a little bit cheaper alternative, but, but also lighting that is, is less intrusive to the neighborhood as well. In the parking lot itself. So I apologize for not explaining that before.
Thank you.
Okay, council members La Romanios and Armandaris, do you have additional questions?
I do.
Okay, La Roman, okay, so go ahead Rebecca, and then I, I've got some questions too. Okay.
Um, a suggestion and a question. So if it's not too late, I'd love for some time to be dedicated to. Surveying the community that lives around there. And then it, will there be any additional? If move improvements to the crosswalk in front of. That parking lot or to the south and west of it?
Are we talking about a crosswalk along gourmet alley or across?
No, on Eagle, Eagleberry and Seventh. South and north and then. Monterey and Monterey and Seventh. Because there's one that goes right across right there, but I'm just wondering. With the additional lighting, will that make it more dangerous?
I don't think it'll make it more dangerous with additional lighting. In fact, it should provide additional safety with that additional, you know. The, the parking lot lighting itself, I don't think it's going to really have an effect on the, the intersection. But at this point, the intersection is, I believe, four-way stop controlled. You get to take quick acts, two-way stop controlled in the north, south direction. And there are no crosswalk improvements currently in that location. It is a main pedestrian thoroughfare to the downtown. We could look at putting some, some crosswalks there in the east, west direction. At that intersection.
Just because I, you know, there's going to be increased traffic and both pedestrian and auto. So.
That's the hope is we get more people downtown.
Okay, I have a question. Do we have any promises to? The art center to do any work? On, because that, that city owned property there. Are there any outstanding promises that if we move forward with this parking lot? That we will also not necessarily completely resurface, but somehow make better. The parking lot at the art center.
I am not familiar with any arrangements that's been made at this point.
Okay, Jimmy, is that your understanding too? Okay, because the person running it has told me otherwise, but you know, that's what people say. So I'm just asking that question if there's something in the lease and the, is there, is there some outstanding written promise? Okay, the answer is no. All right, it's probably time to go to public comment and then we can come back for council discussion because I certainly want to. Want to say something about where I'm leaning on this. Okay, do we have any public comments, Suzanne?
If you would like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand via the Zoom application. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, back to council. I haven't actually heard anyone say what they think about the alternatives in specific. So I, okay, good. I'll let council member Hilton go first and then I'll say what I think.
I'll throw it out there. All right, let's see what happens. First off, before I go to that, I just want to say that parking enforcement will be needed on this parking lot once it's built. Not only to keep the turnover high of the prime locations like front row on Monterey Road and all of the public parking lots included. But it's, you know, great to be able to help offset the ongoing costs associated with maintenance of all the downtown parking lots that the city owns. So I'm in favor of what staff's recommending alternative to. Including all the additional amenities, taking away that concrete walkway and the. Let's see what it says right here. Without the pedestrian plaza and the raised crosswalk within gourmet alley. I, I'm a huge believer in going all in. If we build this halfway, the public will know it. The residents will know it, the tourists will know it, the businesses will know it. So I'm, I'm all for it. And once again. Thank you so much for bringing money to the table by getting that grant. That was huge. Thank you.
All right, I think council member Armandaris was next, then La Romanios, then Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support alternative two with the staff is recommending. And as many amenities as we can squeeze in, I think if we have to spend some out of pocket money. It's an investment. It's an investment in our, in our downtown and our shops and, you know, for our community. And, and so I support that. But I really would want to make sure that we always touch base with the residents that are, that are impacted. We need to be better about that.
All right, council member La Romanios.
Well, I'm going to continue the trend of speaking in favor of alternative two and especially with the amenities that have been. That have been provided or identified by staff. I, I agree with the, the earlier comment where if we go halfway on a project like this. What we're going to end up with is a slab of concrete that people are going to look at and say, eh, you know what, I, I don't feel. Safe parking there. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have that right feel that I'm looking for. This is an opportunity to continue to build out the infrastructure of downtown. And ultimately, I think to attract more people downtown. I know that if we have the electric vehicle charging facilities, that is going to be a major attractor, attractor. For people. I myself have an EV and I know that, you know, when I'm out and about and out in the region. I will, I will, you know, charge that thing up and I will spend money around the area because I got to do something while I'm waiting for it to charge. So I, I think that will. That will be a, a significant attractor for our downtown. I also think the landscaping is so incredibly important. That we get it right. We hear all the time from representatives from the downtown business association that we're always looking for. A sense of place that's beautiful and that this is a way to do that right now, again, avoiding just a, a big slab of concrete. So yeah, I, I think this is a, an opportunity for us to continue to invest and bring people downtown. And I love the idea of using half of the parking lot for a, a farmer's market. That would be, that would be awesome. That was something I remember. Talking about years ago, then the first time I ran for city council. If we could see that happen in my, in my time at some point, that would be great.
All right, council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, I'm also going to echo what I just mentioned right now regarding this option two and all the amenities. And again, I, I'm going to advocate that we look at more charging stations. Gary, thank you for the work and for that grant as well, but I'm going to also. Echo what council member Armandaris said. I think that we should have. Surveyed, personally surveyed or met with the residents. I, I don't feel that the GDBA speaks for all the residents. Sometimes I don't speak for all the businesses. So I was a little disappointed in that. So I, I hope that doesn't happen again. But yeah, I'm in favor of option two with additional charging stations and like. My fellow counsel, the Romanios just mentioned landscaping and all that's very important. You know, like I said, they, we build it, we build it nice and they will come. So I, I look forward to that.
Okay, Jimmy, you have your hand raised? Okay, go ahead.
I, I didn't want to get missed. I, I want to point out two things real quickly. We heard you loud and clear about the public outreach. And before we actually bid out the project, we will meet with the neighbors. And if the neighbors provide us something that we feel we need to bring back to you, we'll come back. So that way it's not too late for them to hear us, to hear from them and we'll do better on that, I promise. The second part is that we bid this.
No, you're good, Jimmy. Yeah.
And, and the second part is, is when this gets bid out, we can bid out alternatives. So even though there are, you know, there's the main project and there's some things that we're already talking about, we can add things, do it and see what it's going to cost. We'll bring that back to you as well because your appetite might be, well, maybe we should spend just a little bit more here because it's, it's going to be a bigger benefit. So we're not buying a parking lot completely yet. And we'll be able to give you some more options and identify what your appetite is to spend additional dollars. So. We've got a few things to do before we move forward, but we're, we're certainly going to do that. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Jimmy?
Okay. Council member.
And as, as, as I mentioned earlier, and I respect what the mayor mentioned in regards to. We're talking about this parking lot specifically. I understand that. But Jimmy, in regards to my initial question regarding the other parking lots. Is that a different discussion? Because again, I, I was understanding that. These funds were going to be designed for not only this parking lot, but the other parking lots as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Tovar. If there had been remaining funds, we would have went down that road. But seeing how we were already so far over budget, we didn't, we didn't feel it was wise to invest that time for money we just didn't have at the time. So we, that's a different conversation and we could have that going forward if that's what the council would like to do.
And I bring that up to my fellow council members because again, as you know, I mean, the other parking lots aren't really being utilized because of. Different reasons. So I think it's something that we need to keep in mind and we're moving forward and, and you know, dressels, parking lots up as well.
Okay, I, I'd like to say some things myself. As I want to make sure everybody realizes, this has not gone out to bid yet. This is just engineering estimates. So I am super concerned about how much this is all costing. I was in complete support of doing this parking lot for the million five that we were allocating. And if I were to support going forward, I would support alternative two. I do think it is beautiful. It has what we need. I love the street side. The horizontal street side length to be able to have events. I could see, you know, art and wine festival things there in addition to farmer's markets. I mean, it's beautiful. But this thing is now, and it's not even gone out to bid yet, over fifteen thousand dollars per parking space. But this thing is now, and it's not even gone out to bid yet, over fifteen thousand dollars per parking space. And it's just, it's outrageous. I mean, a regular parking space, seven thousand, eight thousand is what we were thinking when we initially were talking about this. Something in a covered garage like what was spent, you know, in downtown Morgan Hill is thirty-five thousand dollars per lot. So my personal opinion, under these circumstances, knowing how far over budget we already are and that we're likely to be quite a bit more than that, would be to instead spend our money in the areas of the other parking lots that exist and making those somewhat better, more well-lit. I understand what everyone's saying and so I'm certainly not going to stand in the way of this because it is an investment downtown. And it would be great and it's, it's how we were supposed to go, but I am just shocked at, at how the money just gets carried away. And that's not even with half of the things that others are still suggesting be there. So I just, I just need to say that because it's, it's not what we had intended. We're not really in a position to have all this extra money, so I would support, i-if you, if you guys do, if it does get the majority support, I, I hope it is alternative two. That's all I, I will say. Councilmember Armand Darris, I see your hand raised. You're on mute.
Thank you. Was the question of mitigating the cost brought up when this conversation was had about charging a flat fee or something like that? Very low but flat fee that could help recuperate some of that?
Is that question for me?
I wasn't here for the first conversation, so.
Yeah, I, I know that we've, yeah, I don't know who should, who should answer. I, I don't think it's needed to be answering it, but I know we have had this raised and for some reason it keeps just not happening. We, we don't do the charging thing for spaces.
When this project was approved, which if you recall was just last year when we were doing the budget amendments and all that, we did not make any mention at all of parking enforcement. I can tell you, as we add parking spots, parking becomes more complex. And as it was previously mentioned, we'll have to look at seeing if this is suitable to have charge that pays for enforcement because if those parking spots don't turn over, we, you know, we're going to not have the success that we expected. So I think that conversation is certainly coming.
Yeah, and, and when this started, Rebecca too, we were thinking, you know, two hundred parking spaces. And it's a hundred, it's only a hundred and thirty-seven, so it's not even as, as much as we had envisioned. It's beautiful though. I, I don't want to take away from how, how beautiful it is and, and would be. It's just I'm having a very hard time justifying it myself under today's circumstances, that's all. Are there any other comments before we maybe have a motion? Does somebody want to make a motion? Wait, yeah, we went to public comments. Right, I did that. Okay. Nobody wants to make a motion? Okay, wait. Dion, were you making a motion or do you have a comment?
I'll make a motion for option two with staff's recommendations.
Okay.
A second.
Is that okay? All right. So the motion is by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Armand Darris to, to go with, to approve the Eagleberry and Seventh, I say Eagleberry, Gary, sorry, and Seventh Street Lot Alternative Two, right, Alternative Two Design. Without inclusion of the pedestrian plaza. All right.
We have discussion really quick on that, on the motion?
Another discussion? Okay.
It made, so I want to make sure, I mean, in regards to the recommendation or suggestions regarding, yes, option two, I'm in favor. But with additional charging stations, I mean, is that part of the motion? That's what I'm asking. Is that something that, is that something that the council is interested in?
Ask the motioner.
Well, we'll get, we're going to get that information. He's going to, Jimmy said they're going to have him bid all the options too. At that time, we can make that decision.
Okay.
Okay, Carol, do you have your hand raised?
Well, I was just going to say, I would like to know how many regular parking spaces we would lose if we added more charging spaces. So as long as we get that report back, so I don't think I would like that in this motion right now until we get all the information.
Yeah, it's a hundred and thirty-seven spaces right now, seven of which are electric charging. So for every additional electric, you reduce the others.
It's a one for.
Right. And I want to be clear that the no vote I'm about to do is strictly because of how much this cost has escalated over what we intended. Not because I don't support a parking lot there. Okay, are we ready to take a vote? Yes.
Rebecca Armand Darris.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Roman Yos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Ray Blainsey.
By myself, no. Okay, so passes six to one. All right, all right, moving on to item B. Standing Report on Operational Impacts and Other City Efforts Related to the COVID-19 Pandemic. Chief Wyatt, are you in the house?
Hi, Madam Mayor, I sure am. Sorry, sorry for the delay. I had to quickly shift. In any, any event, I wanted to cover very quickly, just enough to take too much time. There's been concern about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine that's been placed on pause by the CDC as they investigate six people that, with a rare blood disease that actually developed some clots. I'll just say that for right now, our in-home mobile vaccination has not been put on hold, but now we've reverted to using the Pfizer vaccine, which, which kind of doubles our workload, but, and also means that the recipient has to get two shots instead of just the one. But I'm hearing some encouraging news that probably the Johnson and Johnson vaccine will be unpaused probably in the next couple of weeks here. So, so that's, that's good news going forward. Also, I just wanted to mention that the the mass vaccination that's going on over at the Gilroy High School has increased or ramped up their, their vaccinations. And that's extremely good news. That means that the county does have enough of the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines to, to make up for the loss of the J and J. And then one last thing, I just want to mention that the the county has offered to do some more pop-up clinics at the senior center. We needed to, to focus on the, of the in-home mobile vax before we recommitted to doing that. So that may offer yet another opportunity as well as other locations within the city with a partnership between the city and, and the, and the county health department. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
All right, council, any, all right, Councilmember Bracco.
Chief, are we, what are we currently doing to get the homeless population vaccinated?
Right now, we've been in talks with using the in-home mobile vax as a means of getting into the homeless community. However, we wanted to focus on the most vulnerable of the population, the ones that just have no way of getting to the the vaccination centers and have co-morbid factors. But it certainly has, we've certainly been in talks with them and the J and J was the ideal vaccine for that. Because, because the very nature of the homeless being transient, it's hard to determine that you're going to be able to get a second vaccination with either the Moderna or the, or the Pfizer.
Okay, thank you. Those were working on it.
Sure, yes.
Councilmember Armand Darris?
Yeah, I was just gonna say in response to Councilmember Bracco, the county does have a team that's been on the ground throughout the county vaccinating folks to at the different encampments. And then when we've had pop-ups at San Ysidro Park, myself and other folks from Pitt Stop Outreach and other community groups have walked to the encampments and recruited folks to go get vaccinated at the park. So that, all of that helps, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much and that you're absolutely correct. So we're trying to find a way to, where the vaccination gets brought to them rather than trying to get them over to the, to the pop-up sites.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand in the Zoom application. It appears we have no public comment.
All right then, thank you, Chief Wyatt.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, introduction of new business. Consideration of an extension of the solid waste franchise agreement with Recology South Valley. Jimmy, is this you? Yes.
Good morning, or good after, good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know what time it is. The item before you is for council input and direction to staff concerning the Recology South Valley franchise extension. As many longtime residents have probably paid their, their refuse bills. They know that this, this current agreement has been in place for several decades and it's a joint agreement with our friends with the city of Morgan Hill. Their program administrator, Tony Ulow, who knows a lot more about this than I do, is online as well if you have any real specific questions, but he, he's really our point person who works with Recology to, you know, maintain this agreement. The current agreement does expire on June thirty, thirty of twenty twenty-two. And so since neither city really receives a lot of complaints about the service, we, we both cities have very good relations with Recology. We do recommend that we go ahead and enter into negotiations to extend the franchise agreement. There are a few things that I do want to point out to you that we've, we've heard from council or that we've seen in our own community. And but there's also some legislative things coming from the state. And the biggest change is SB thirteen eighty-three, which requires residents and businesses to sort and divert compostable organic materials. That is no surprise. It will be an additional charge for residents to pay, to pay for Recology to assist in that service and that is mandated by law. So I'm sorry to inform people that your rates will go up and, and some of that will be attributed to SB thirteen eighty-three. Some of the things from Gilroy's point of view that we've received in, input from some of our residents is the lead process for the city of Gilroy. If Recology has outstanding collections, we do have a concurrent provision in our contract where we are able to assess a lien on the property on Recology's behalf. We've also received a lot of input about street sweeping, both public and private streets and how those costs are distributed and equity involved with that. So we'll be talking to Recology about that. We also want to discuss Recology's long-term plan for the, the implementation of electric collection vehicles. And then also want to continue the discussions, as we've certainly seen in the last year or so, about bulky item collection and voucher systems. And then lastly, community cleanups. Phil Crichay was on the call earlier and he is always a good person to talk to, always willing to help and always able to assist. And so these are some of the things we'll be negotiating with him and Recology. The next steps is that we wouldn't want to hear if there's anything maybe we've missed on our radar about garbage services or things that you've heard from your constituents. If we, we take that input from you and initiate negotiations with the city of Morgan Hill and then the new franchise agreement would come back to the city council for approval with the service date beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. Right, that's the extent of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions and Tony Ulow is here as well if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, council, if you want to, yeah, there we go. Thank you. I don't see any hands raised, but council, any questions for Jimmy? Oh, Councilmember Hilton. You're on mute. Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Blainsey. Jimmy, thank you and thank you for bringing up all those additional items, especially the, the clean fleet for trucks. That's, that's something that's important to me. And, you know, just a, just a positive note for Phil, I couldn't agree with you more about being able to work with him. When I was on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, he was a great part in trying to get us to educate the, the community on not blocking the bike lanes when they put their trash cans out. That was huge. And we just got a newsletter today that actually had that, that promotional item in there. So I just wanted to say thank you to that.
All right, anyone else?
Just, I appreciate.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the what Recology does for the community. I know with the Mal Festival and other festivals, they provide all the, the garbage service and cans and stuff for, for our festivals and other community events. So I think overall the, the community has a general, has a positive opinion of Recology and the services they provide.
All right, thank you. Suzanne, do we have any public comments on this item?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your phone now or raise your hand via the Zoom application. It appears we have no public comment.
Okay, council, this is a motion to, well, yeah, it does. It says roll call vote to receive report and provide direction to staff concerning negotiating of a franchise agreement extension with Recology.
So moved?
All right. Moved by Councilmember Hilton, seconded by Councilmember Tovar. Roll call vote.
Rebecca Armand Darris. Yes. Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter La Roman Yos.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar. Ray Blainsey.
Yes, that passes unanimously. All right, item B. Council initiated request for information on slow streets program. Gary, take it away because I know that when we said this, we thought this was maybe an hour of staff investment of time. But given that report, I would say you've spent quite a bit more than that, so.
Just a little bit, just a little bit, but happy to provide.
That's what happens. That's exactly what happens.
So, so this evening, there's a lot of information in your staff report, including links to some other cities' slow streets programs as well as some other materials. So hopefully you've had a chance to look through some of that. What I'm going to do this evening is, is basically do what was asked. Give you a little definition of what slow streets are and then identify what the pros and cons are and what the staff impact would be if we were to go ahead and take that on to implement a slow streets program. So back in February, the city council directed staff to bring back this informational item regarding the impacts of implementing a slow streets program for the city of Gilroy. Now, in the research that we've looked into, both with the SFMTA and Alameda, the city of Alameda, they have very different definitions. The SFMTA defines a slow streets program as designated to limit through traffic on certain residential streets and allow them to be used in a, as a shared space for people traveling by foot and bicycle. Alameda is a little bit more refined and I think is more consistent with some of these other communities. They've defined it as a program to implement soft closures of select streets through traffic to facilitate physical distancing of six feet or more during the COVID emergency. So it seems that a lot of these cities, when COVID first hit, everybody was put into a shutdown mode. There was a need for people to not sit behind their computers in their garage all day and work from home, but to actually get out and walk a little bit. So to open up some streets for public use and for, to eliminate traffic on those streets. So that's what a lot of the cities did. And a lot of those cities is, I think the articles that I provided are starting to look at maybe removing some of those slow streets programs. So looking at the pros and cons, and I've got some listed here, not as details in the staff report, but basically, slow streets promote the community to stay active and improve their health through outdoor physical activity. You can't say enough about outdoor activity and how good that is for us, especially in these times. It's to establish a traffic calming program on public streets to allow those streets to be used for recreation, including walking, bicycling, bicycling and running. Another pro is that residents along those designated streets may appreciate the reduced traffic. And there have been some reports that drivers in designated neighborhoods travel at a safer speed and have a higher rate of stopping at stop signs in and around and near designated slow streets. And then closing streets to through traffic provides the environment, environmental benefit of reducing motor vehicle greenhouse emissions on those streets that are designated as slow streets. Looking at the other side of the coin there, these are, again, these were typically implemented during the shelter in place and there's maybe less of a need for it now. Again, that's for the council.
Again, that's for the council to decide. The city also has ample pedestrian and bicycle facilities, including the UBUS path system and trail system that provides a clear pathway that's not impacted by vehicles. We haven't received as a city any slow streets requests over the last year, even though a number of cities in the Bay Area are implementing it. The city already has a traffic calming program, so if there's any concern about speeds or about heavy vehicular volume, we already have a program set up for that. Residents along those designated slow streets may not appreciate the additional bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and we've seen some articles that identified the concerns there. That not everybody is in support of slow streets. And there's also a need for thorough planning and outreach, but you can't just identify a street, throw some signs up. As we heard even at the last item that I presented on, there's a need for significant outreach, and the slow streets program would definitely require that. The program can be expensive to implement, I think the city of Oakland spent over thirty thousand dollars just on signs, let alone you know, the installation and the maintenance of those signs by their maintenance folks. Any closed street would have to be coordinated with both Recology and the VTA if there's bus service on that street. An act, enactment of a slow streets program would require significant staff effort, including Public Works Engineering, Operations, our community engagement folk, our PIO, as well as the Police Department, to provide enforcement of those signs. And, and you know, from an engineering standpoint, if, if it's the desire of the council to implement a slow streets program, staffing would either need to be increased or other higher priority projects or programs might be impacted, and, and right now, we're spending all our time on our five-year paving program, I'd hate to take time away from that. So, again, potential impacts to the city. You know, Public Works would be managing the slow streets program if, if requested to be implemented, providing the oversight, providing the coordination, kind of, kind of being the quarterback on this thing. Managing the outreach and the input from the community, selecting the streets, taking comments from the community, et cetera. Public Works Maintenance would be maintaining those partial closures and then replacing the signs when some frustrated people would either push them down or knock them down, or like Redwood City, I heard, you know, they, they couldn't maintain it on a certain street because the neighbors kept pitching the signs out into an adjacent field. We'd have to have police enforcement to not only stop people from pitching signs into an adjacent field, but also to make sure that, you know, the vehicles are behaving properly on those streets designated as slow streets, and again, our PIO, Rochelle would, you know, have to really help us and assist us on the initial and ongoing outreach assistance, management of the comments from the community and maintenance of our slow streets website that we'd have to create and generate to implement a slow streets program. So, the funding for that, I knew, new streets, excuse me, slow streets program would require funding for, again, program development, outreach, community meetings, et cetera. Procurement and installation and maintenance of the signs, and then ongoing enforcement activity by our police department, so that's the information that I was able to do research on and bring you this evening and in the staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Gary. If you could remove your screen sharing, yes, I can see everybody, thank you, alright. Council members, anybody want to make any comments? Council member Marks, I see your hand.
Thank you for your report, Gary. How would the streets be selected?
That, it would be a very extensive process, we would have to look at linking streets, because you couldn't just have one floating out there by itself, you'd have to do you know, you could open it up to requests from the public, I think one agency, I think, received, I think it was San Francisco, received over seven thousand requests from the public on four hundred somewhat of streets that had been requested to be slow streets when they first started talking about their division implementing a slow streets program. So, really, it depends, you know, we could select streets, or we could go out and, and what we probably want to do is get community input and have public meetings and neighborhood meetings and outreach sessions to really find out where, where we'd want to do that, we'd also have to select streets, you know, within all parts of the community, we just couldn't pick a one or two different streets, we'd have to really look at, at all levels and all streets within our community, so it would have to be a series of streets that we would have to be identifying.
And would the residents on that street be able to say yes or no if they wanted it?
We would certainly have to go out and survey them all, we'd have to have community meetings and neighborhood meetings with each of those streets that we would propose to establish. And then we would probably need to do some kind of a survey, we would bring that survey information back to the council and let the council decide if, if there was adequate support or not to implement a slow streets program on that designated street.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I am not seeing any other hands. This is on here for this purpose, guys, where are you? Nobody wants to comment, okay, council member LaRomaños?
I'll jump in, and Gary, I'll thank you also for the, for the report as well. You know, I, I think for me, there are a couple of, of things that really kind of stood out in your findings, and one of those in particular was around the cost, both the financial cost of trying to implement something like this, but also the opportunity cost that might come with pursuing this at the expense of other projects. You might recall that during our our session that we had our goal-setting session earlier this year, we really did focus and spend a lot of time on talking about road repair and how important that is for a functioning city and for our residents, but also for businesses as well, and given the high cost that's gonna come with that, the amount of time that's gonna take, personally, I'd be a little concerned that a project might derail that longer-term effort, so one of the things that I'm considering about this is the challenge that comes with the opportunity cost, and so so you've raised some very good concerns for me to think about this.
Alright, I, I'm just gonna, because I can, I'm piggybacking off of the council member LaRomaños, I, I will not be supporting it for those same reasons, I'm into the funding of our streets. Council member Bracco. You're on, there you go.
I'm on no vote also.
Okay, council member Tovar.
Yeah, I, I as well, I think that Peter laid it out perfectly, and for me, like you said, streets are first and foremost for me right now, thank you.
Okay, I, council member Marks, is your hand up again? Okay, you're on mute?
Sorry, yes, and my hand is up again. I will not be supporting this either, I think we have adequate bike trails in the city, we're not as large as San Francisco or Oakland who have these programs, and I haven't heard any concerns from the residents about needing it. So, I don't want to see any of our money also derailed from other projects to fund this, so, sorry.
Okay, I, my scripted agenda suggests that this has to be a roll call vote, I didn't know that this rose to, to quite that, but.
Have you taken public comment yet?
Oh yeah, public comment, Suzanne, anybody?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now on your phone, or raise your hand via the Zoom application. We have no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, almost missed that one, okay, wait, I see a hand, council member Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blainsey. Thank you to my colleagues who agreed to place this item on the agenda, and thank you to staff for providing a brief introduction to what a slow streets program is. Small changes like a slow streets program in the way we live, while in combination, while with removing the barriers and allowing outdoor dining, parklets and better use of public spaces as options are the future of our city. I won't be pushing for a slow streets program at this time because of the lack of staffing that was mentioned, with the risk of CIP projects not being managed and completed. I highly suggest to the public that wants this, that they use the special event block party permit process for their streets to close. Keep in touch with my office, and we can introduce this item in the, at some point in the future, thank you.
Okay, so would someone like to, apparently I need a motion to.
If there's no support for the item, it can just die if there's no, you don't.
Okay, then it dies.
It sounds like that's what's happening to it, so.
Yes, yes, I just, the way it's written, it sounds like, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, item C. Appointment of LeAnn McPhillips as the interim Gilroy City Clerk. Jimmy, staff report?
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of city council, with the recent retirement of city clerk Shawna Frills just last Friday, it is recommended that city staff take some time to evaluate the position, including its job functions and reporting status, and come back to council and provide some recommendations for you to consider, and it is, it's recommended that the best opportunity for that to occur is if we do appoint an interim city clerk. In the meantime, and LeAnn McPhillips has been with the city almost twenty years, and, or a little over twenty, I believe, and is currently our admin services director, who has currently some oversight over the city clerk's office with Susan, with, with Shawna now being retired, so the recommendation is to appoint LeAnn, and and while, on this temporary basis, she has no, she has no long-term interest in the position, and thus, that alone will give her the ability to help us look at it and see how it can best function in the organization. I should also note that part of that recommendation is that LeAnn receives a five percent increase in her salary due to taking on another component amongst the many, many hats that she wears for us, so that's my recommendation, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Alright, thank you, Jimmy. Council member Tovar, you have a question?
No, I, I was ready to make a motion, so.
Oh well, no, I have to go to public comment too, so, hang on. Okay, I see no other questions, then Suzanne, do we have any public comments?
If you'd like to please speak on this item, please press star nine now on your phone, or raise your hand via the Zoom application. We have no public comment.
Okay, thank you, so now, council member Tovar, make your motion.
I make the motion that we appoint Ms. Phillips to interim city clerk with the stipulation of a five percent increase in her salary until a permanent city clerk is, is hired. A second.
Okay, that motion was made by council member Tovar and seconded by council member Bracco, roll call vote.
Rebecca Armandares.
Yes.
Dion Bracco.
Yes.
Zach Hilton.
Yes.
Peter LaRomaños.
Yes.
Carol Marks.
Yes.
Fred Tovar.
Yes.
Ray Blainsey.
Yes, thank you, that passes unanimously. Alright, city administrators' reports?
Thank you, mayor, I have just, I have just a couple of quick reports, I did want to tell you that the individual who applied for the grant for the generator Sarasota, Sarasotto, who is an engineer in the Public Works Department, so I'm gonna point out every grant we get going forward, because I know that it's a, that makes everybody feel pretty good, so I'll do a better job of that. I've been asked to pass on some information concerning the Gilroy Student Access Program that is starting up on Thursday at San Ysidro Park and is being provided by Community Solutions. It's for middle and high school students from Gilroy Unified School District. They can go learn about restorative justice circles, service referrals, one-on-one sessions, safe spaces, mentoring, and, but what every teenager wants, they have Wi-Fi, so very good to see this program being put on by Community Solutions. Looking forward to that, and then lastly, I have some very good news for you. I was notified today by Julie Wyrick, who was one of our planners, that the city of Gilroy received the Northern California American Planning Association two thousand twenty-one Award of Merit for our general plan update in the category of comprehensive plan small jurisdiction. The city competed against other cities, and we beat them, so I want to thank everybody in the Planning Commission, the General Plan Advisory Committee, but also our, our planners, who those of you who probably went through this the first time, and it ended up very well, very well done, and ended on a very good note, so that was because of everybody's collaborative work, so I want to congratulate Julie and Karen Gardner and everybody in that department. That concludes my report, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Andy, you got anything?
Not, not at this time, no report.
Okay. Alright then, with that, we are adjourned, everybody. See you at the next meeting, well, next Monday, yeah, with school board.
Good night, everyone.
Alright, good night, bye.